Almanice, he looked like he was gonna pass. He was staring at that guy like he was gonna pass it.
Counselor, we are live to air. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to our meeting. And I'd like to thank our broadcasting partners and the media partners that report on and broadcast our meeting. Before we get going, I would like to give Counselor Hollingsworth the opportunity to say a couple of words. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, thank you Mayor, good evening. I just want to take this time to basically thank all the viewers watching our council programs each council meeting. It's viewers such as yourselves that helps us to better understand what the needs are of the community. So, over the weekend, I had a chance to speak with someone that constantly watches council. And I just want to say thank you for taking the time and to listen. So, this individual that mentioned watching our sessions, he provides some really good insight and some excellent ideas that we should consider as we move forward from planning our community to economic growth. So, I'm going to take this time to again thank everyone that does watch our meetings and especially to this individual, John, and you know who you are. Again, thank you for spending the time with me and sharing your opinions and your insights because this community is all about all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Christian, likewise, you had something you wanted to share with the community?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to update council and the community in general about the progress the Splash Pad Committee has made in the last couple of months. We've been working hard to move this project forward. As council is aware, we've made application to the Trillium Fund for funding to support the project. In addition, we've applied to the Aviva Community Fund. Aviva is spelt A-V-I-V-A. And the Aviva Fund, they support a lot of community projects across the province. And we are now applicants under the Community Health Large-Scale Project. And we're eligible for up to $100,000 in grant money. So, this is a big ask and a big project. But in order for us to be considered on their shortlist, and they go through a process, there's several hurdles that we have to follow. The community has to show its support for the project. And the way we do that is we log on to the Aviva website and we cast our votes. And anybody can cast a vote. As a matter of fact, every citizen is allowed to cast 18 votes. I cast my 18 today because there's a variety of projects that you can vote for. Obviously, the only project we want to vote for is the Sault Ste. Marie Splash Pad. So, I've cast my 18 votes for the Sault Ste. Marie Splash Pad and Counselor Myers and my co-chair and myself. And the rest of the committee is asking the community to please get on board, get onto their website and vote up to 18 times. You can enter, you can access the website through the city's website. There's a link to the Splash Pad voting. So, we encourage everybody to go on the city website and find the link. You have to just go through a short registration process and then it's very, very simple to cast your vote. You can also access the voting through suste Marie, one word, dot C A forward slash vote Splash Pad. That's suste Marie dot C A forward slash vote Splash Pad. The voting is open until October the 19th, so we encourage everybody to do it tonight. Vote early, vote often, get the votes in so we can get to the next hurdle. The shortlist of 15 projects and then their committee selects the most worthy. But getting the votes in and getting a great number of votes in will be a great indication that the city's supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Christian. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, have a motion by Councilors Nero and Hoopanen resolved that minutes of regular council meeting September 25, 2017 be approved?
All in favor? Carried.
And under Agenda Item 4, Counselor Turco is not in attendance, so it'll be Counselor Nero and Shoemaker resolve that the agenda for October...
Actually, we have to go through the peculiar interests. Do any counselors have any peculiar interests? Seeing none, we're gonna just amend Number 4. Counsel, approve of agenda as presented. I want to just bring your attention, I was going to, we're going to withdraw 8.5 and 8.6. Sorry, not 8.5 and 8.6, 6.5 and 6.6. 6.5 is the tree replacement, 6.6 is the fountain. City staff is working on a larger project where they're looking at a number of downtown projects. And these are in that larger project. So, there's a report coming to you in November that shows all these projects, their different costs, and is looking for some feedback from you. So, we'd be essentially dealing with these things twice. And in light of that, I said to city staff, I'd much prefer to pull these from this agenda and just give you the full report on all the downtown projects, their costing and their potential to move forward. And we'll have the discussion once as opposed to having it on a one-off basis. So, if, that's the proposal is that we amend the agenda. So, the agenda is approved as amended with the exception of Items 6.5 and 6.6, which will be pulled.
All in favor? Carried.
And under Agenda Item 5, BDC Small Business Week, Lori Nakarado, Senior Accounts Manager with the Business Development Bank is in attendance.
Welcome to council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm Lori Nakarado and I'm here representing the Business Development Bank of Canada and the Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation. Preparations are well underway for the 2017 edition of BDC Small Business Week, which runs from October 15th to the 21st. It's an annual celebration of entrepreneurship that the Business Development Bank of Canada organized almost 40 years ago. BDC is the only bank devoted exclusively to entrepreneurs. It promotes Canadian entrepreneurship with a focus on small and medium-sized enterprises. With 118 branches from coast to coast, BDC provides businesses in all industries with financing and advisory services. BDC Week started in British Columbia in the Lower Fraser Valley in 1979, where they first pooled the resources together to organize a week of activities for entrepreneurs. BDC then trademarked that week and it was officially launched across the country in 1981. 10,000 entrepreneurs come together at hundreds of events across the country to learn, network with other entrepreneurs and celebrate entrepreneurship. 99.7 of all Canadian businesses are small and medium-sized and employ more than 90% of private sector workers. That's something worth celebrating. This year's theme is Future Proof Your Business. We're all looking forward, we're all looking toward the future to uncover emerging trends that will shape and grow Canadian companies in the years to come. From emerging digital technologies that are redefining ways of doing business to shifting demographic trends marked by an aging population and increasingly diversified and skilled labor force. Canada's business landscaping is changing in profound and unprecedented ways across all industries. Join us at over 300 events across the country to celebrate Canadian entrepreneurship and find out how you can start adapting your business to tomorrow's trends today. Great things happen when entrepreneurs get together, come share ideas, find business opportunities and enjoy yourself at a BDC Small Business Event near you. Please go to BDC.ca to see what's happening in our community and across the country. So, just on a side note, I'd like to walk everyone out to some events that we have scheduled here in the Sioux. On October 18th, we have partnered with the Community Development Corporation. We're holding a couple of workshops on the money side of business and understanding basic financial tools and techniques of financial management. And October 19th, we have partnered with the Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation. We're hosting the Bridges to Better Business Event where we are featuring Erin Burry, who's been named one of Marketing Magazine's Top 30 Under 30 to speak with students in the afternoon at the Algoma University George Leach Centre and will later speak to an audience at our pitch competition finals at Quattro. So, please come and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a proclamation here. Whereas Canadian entrepreneurs are the engine that drives our country's economy and whereas 95.81% of businesses within the Sault Ste. Marie District are considered small businesses and whereas small and medium-sized businesses are the cornerstone of the Canadian economy and they account for 99.7% of all Canadian companies and employ more than 90% of private sector workers. Whereas the BDC Small Business Week has been organized in communities across Canada since 1979, whereas BDC Small Business Week is about creating opportunities for entrepreneurs to share success stories, talk to business experts, exchange ideas, participate in events held across Canada. And whereas this year during BDC Small Business Week, the Sault Ste. Marie BDC will partner with the Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation, the Community Development Corporation of Sault Ste. Marie and area, the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Centre, Mailworks Centre for Entrepreneurship, the Sault Ste. Marie Chamber of Commerce and the Chartered Professional Accountants of Ontario to host three events. And therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie do hereby proclaim the week of October 15th to 21st, 2017 as BDC Small Business Week with the national theme Future Proof Your Business, Adapting to Technology and Demographic Trends. I request all communities in Ontario and across Canada observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities. Let's all celebrate entrepreneurship and its remarkable contribution to Sault Ste. Marie and to our country. Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.2, Management for Long-Term Management of Used Nuclear Fuel, there are two presentations, one from Ontario Power Generation and one from Nuclear Waste Management Organization. The first presenter is Fred Kuntz, Manager, Corporation Relations and Communications with Ontario Power Generation.
Fred, before you get going, maybe I should just give council some context. Shortly after the beginning of this, our term, I was approached by Norm Sandberg, who is here from the Nuclear Waste Management Organization, asking if we wanted to have an educational or some information presented to us on what the industry was doing and what the processes were that were going on. And at the time, they were in the process of making some of the decisions that they have to make. So, we didn't, I didn't take them up on that offer then. But I said, you know, as we get on in the term and as things evolve, maybe when it becomes more timely, we can have you here. So, we've only got a year left and we're three years in now. So, I thought maybe this was a good time to hear about what they were doing. So, I reached back out to Norm and Norm put this together. And there's two different groups before us. There's the OPG and we're hearing from them first. And then the Nuclear Waste Management Organization will hear from them second. So, this is, no decisions before you tonight, counsel. It's just for education and information. And if something arises out of it, we can have that kind of debate or discussion at a subsequent meeting. Go ahead, sir, thank you, welcome to council.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, counselors, for the invitation to present tonight. My name is Fred Kuntz and I'm the Manager of Corporate Relations and Communications for Ontario Power Generation in Bruce County. And I'm here to present on the Deep Geological Repository. I think you're probably all familiar with Ontario Power Generation, but I will just say that we are owned by the Province of Ontario, so therefore by you. And we are a net supplier of revenue to the government. We don't set the electricity rates, we generate electricity. And then other companies transmit it to your home and charge you for it. We have a lot of employees all over the province, hydro stations everywhere. We own three nuclear plants, one in Darlington, one in Pickering and one at Bruce, which is run by a private company, Bruce Power. A word about nuclear energy. It is, the majority of the electricity that you use comes from nuclear. 60% in Ontario. And it has many important benefits. It's clean. It's really an important part of Canada's path to achieve its goals on global warming. And global warming should concern all of us. It's safe, it's low cost, among the lowest type of electricity and in terms of cost, and it's reliable. But we must deal responsibly with the byproduct, which is nuclear waste. So, just the ABCs of nuclear waste, it really comes in three categories classified by the level of radioactivity. Low-level waste is like typical industrial waste, mops and rags, paper, wood. And the level of radioactivity is so low, you could basically handle it with your bare hands. It's, your skin would protect you. But of course, our workers wear gloves. Intermediate-level waste is a higher level of radioactivity. It's the resins and the filters that are used to filter the heavy water. And then high-level waste is spent fuel. I'm not here to talk about the high-level waste, that'll be the next level, the next presentation after me. But what Ontario Power Generation is proposing to do is build a repository for the low and intermediate-level waste. Right now, it's all stored on an interim basis at the Bruce Nuclear Site, which is beside Lake Huron, at the surface in warehouses and in in-ground containers. That's the interim solution. We're looking for a permanent solution and we propose to build a deep geological repository. This is considered best practice in the world. There are 10 underground repositories in the world right now for nuclear waste and none of them has leaked radiation. As I say, it's stored at the surface now, but what that drawing shows is two shafts being drilled down 680 meters into the rock and then in placement tunnels deep down in the earth. That is deeper than the CN Tower is tall. It's very deep down and it takes you down to a level of limestone rock that has basically been there for 450 million years and has survived intact through nine glaciers, multiple shifts in continents. It is impermeable water. One molecule of water would take more than 300,000 years to move just the length of your arm. That's how impermeable it is to water flows. And there's no drinkable water down there anyway. Water doesn't get down there. We have a willing host community. The municipality of Concarden has been looking at this for a decade and a half. They and all of the adjacent municipalities formally support the DGR. Many other municipalities around Ontario have formally supported the DGR. We would welcome a resolution from Sault Ste. Marie Council if you are so inclined in the future, once you've studied this, if you believe in the environmental protection it brings to the environment. All of those counselors, of course, attended the very long hearings. This is a science-based project. It's been studied for over 12 years. 12,000 pages of evidence were submitted. There were 300 interventions at the Joint Review Panel hearings that occurred in 2012 and 2013, the longest such hearings on record in Canada for a project. And the three independent experts who chaired that panel at the end concluded that the Bruce Site is appropriate, the environment and the lake would be protected and that the DGR should be built now rather than later. That was in 2015 and then there was a federal election and a new minister who asked for additional studies. I'll explain that in a second. But I want to say too that there's an international consensus. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has no objections to this project and others around the world have declared in favor of it. So, on the approvals, normally after a panel report like that, there's a certain amount of time for the minister to make a decision. But there was an election and the new minister had questions. For us, we spent most of 2016 and 2017 answering those questions. But we have also committed to the local indigenous communities that it won't be built without their support. So, we're currently engaged with the Saugus and Ojibwe Nation to obtain their support. And then we would proceed to seek the environmental assessment report approval. And after that, we'd seek a construction license and then we'd build it and then we'd seek an operating license. So, there are many hurdles still ahead. It would be probably at least 10 years before this thing would be in service. But I want to emphasize that this project, this 1 billion project, is a 1 billion lake protection measure. Right now, people don't really know this or think about it, but there are more than 40 sites around the Great Lakes that store nuclear waste at the surface, near the water, on an interim basis. And that's not sustainable in the long run. It's in buildings that would have to be built and rebuilt and rebuilt for hundreds and thousands of years. The responsible thing to do and the thing that will protect the environment is to build a DGR and store this waste permanently in a place where it'll be safe forever. DGR is the right thing to do today and for future generations. That's my presentation.
Okay, do you have any questions for Ontario Power Generation? Certainly appreciate your time, sir, and if there are questions after, we can call you back up again, but...
Absolutely.
We'll take, we'll take the presentation now from the Nuclear Waste Management Organization.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne Pacella, Director of Community Wellbeing Assessment and Dialogue with Nuclear Waste Management Organization.
Welcome to council.
Thank you very much, your worship, Mayor Provenciano and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you some information about who the N W M O is and what it's doing. Who we are. N W M O was formed in 2002 in response to federal legislation called the Nuclear Fuel Waste Act. The N W M O, as per the act, is funded by the waste producers. That is the folks who create the used nuclear fuel. That is a byproduct of the generation of electricity at nuclear power plants. And this is really the principle of those who create the waste are responsible for its long-term management and implementing a solution. And it operates on a not-for-profit basis. Our mission is stated here on this slide and we'd like to share a mission statement just to give you a sense of what the organization is about. We see our role as to develop and implement collaboratively with Canadians a management approach for the long-term care of Canada's used nuclear fuel that is socially acceptable, technically sound, environmentally responsible and economically feasible. And in fact, the Nuclear Fuel Waste Act required this organization to be formed and also that the first task of the organization was to conduct a study over three years to engage Canadians from coast to coast, to look at possible management approaches, to identify a preferred approach from the point of view of citizens, to bring that to government, government decide on a long-term management approach and then N W M O would be responsible for implementing it. Just want to say a bit about the material that we're responsible for managing. I've actually brought a model in case it's helpful to get a sense of it. This is a used fuel bundle, it's a model. Well, it's an actual used fuel bundle. It doesn't have the fuel inside of it. So, it's something that I can hold like this. You can see that it's a solid. It doesn't burn, it doesn't explode, it doesn't emit a gas, there's no liquid involved. And in fact, inside these pencils, these tubes, used fuel pencils, are fuel pellets. And here's a model of a fuel pellet. It's a baked ceramic fuel. It's hard, very hard. If you dropped it in water, it would not dissolve. So, we're talking about a very stable, solid material. And it goes into a used, it goes into a nuclear reactor looking like this. It comes out looking like this, except it's got radiation and heat emitting from it. And this radiation makes it a hazardous material. It needs to be managed, it needs to be isolated and contained and isolated from people in the environment for hundreds of thousands of years. So, the project that we're embarking upon really together, under the Nuclear Fuel Waste Act, is the long-term management of this material. There are 2.7 million used fuel bundles that have already been created. So, the material is there, it would fill, if you could stack it like cordwood, seven NHL-sized hockey rinks to the top of the boards, not the glass, but the boards. That gives a sense of the volume that we're talking about. And there's been a lot of work done to understand how to contain and isolate this from people in the environment over the long periods of time that are going to be required. Adaptive Phase Management, this is the name of Canada's plan. As I say, it emerged out of this three-year dialogue going from coast to coast to coast. And it's, it wasn't actually any one of the approaches that was examined in the first place. It was people saying, well, no, one of those original approaches meet our objectives as citizens. We need to take pieces from different approaches and create a Made in Canada approach, which is called adaptive phase management. Ultimately, the fuel will be contained and isolated in a deep geological repository with multiple barriers. These multiple barriers are important given the nature of the material. And to put it in a repository would make it impervious to glaciers coming over, which will happen a number of times over hundreds of thousands of years. Also, it will separate it from any interaction with the surface. And that's very important and that needs to be demonstrated in order for this project ultimately to be licensed. It's a large project, it's $20 billion in order to build this repository and implement Canada's plan. And that's from the point of getting the construction license moving forward. And it's a project that would operate over more than 100 years. So, it's a multi-generational project if we want to see it that way. Used nuclear fuel is currently managed at the reactor sites. It doesn't leave those reactor sites. It's in licensed facilities overseen by the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission and the International Atomic Energy Agency. Once the repository is constructed, it would need to be transported. And there's been a lot of work to develop a robust container. We've got lots of information about that as well. But that container would need to withstand any accidents that might happen along the way that one could envision and keep its contents contained. It's a very robust package and some of the material that we have out there shows a train hitting the container and showing that it can withstand that kind of force. And there's other tests as well that are dictated by the International Atomic Energy Agency and that are also enshrined in the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission regulations. I mentioned this is a large project and the purpose is to safely contain and isolate used nuclear fuel from people in the environment. But it is a large project that's required to implement it. So, understanding that we're going to have to, have to put in place a large project, we have the opportunity to steer a project of $20 billion to try to achieve other objectives that we have in Ontario where 90% of the used nuclear fuel exists. So, this is one of the things that N W M O is working with communities to plan and consider how to use the economic engine associated with a project like this to achieve other objectives that are important to people in the area. So, it can fit well within, within the long-term vision and objectives that people in the area that would host the project would ultimately have. The siting process is in operation now. It began in 2010, was initiated. The siting process asked communities that were interested in learning more about the project and the siting process and exploring whether they may, might meet the requirements of Canada's plan to host it, to come forward. A number of communities did come forward. Over the last seven years, we've conducted progressively more detailed studies to examine the potential of each of these areas that expressed an interest in meeting the requirements of the project. And we're progressively focusing our activities as the studies get bigger and more detailed on the areas that have strong potential to meet the requirements of the project. So, none of these folks have agreed to host the project. It's a long process of learning and conducting studies before people are asked whether they would welcome this into their area. These are the communities that triggered the process. These aren't the only folks that we're working with because as we understand, we need to branch out to neighboring communities, First Nation and Métis communities to involve them in the studies because ultimately it's a partnership that we're going to need to move the project forward and with a regional implementation plan. These are the things that we're focused on now, the criteria really that we're going to use to further narrow down from the seven areas out of the original 22 that are currently the focus of study. Safety, of course, is the primary consideration. No decision will be made that compromises safety. If safety can't be assured, nothing else really matters. Transportation, both technically acceptable and socially acceptable, is going to be a very important part of decision-making. That's not the focus of the current study. We've done some initial work in all the areas... We've done some initial work, and all the areas that we work with have the potential to meet the requirements, but more work needs to be done. But what is very important is exploring the potential for partnership, that the project will only be implemented with the involvement of that community that came forward initially to trigger activities in the area, as well as First Nation and Métis communities in the area and surrounding communities. So the engagement, we've got a big set of engagement activities, as well as technical studies, really focus on exploring the potential to develop a supportive partnership around the project, to find the way how it might best fit into an area and that people may welcome it. Importantly, N W M O is guided by an Aboriginal policy and an indigenous knowledge policy. This is important to help set the expectations related to engagement of Aboriginal peoples very important, and how we're going to treat the traditional knowledge, the indigenous knowledge that they see fit to share with us as we conduct these studies together. Just before closing my brief remarks, just want to say that this is really an area of international collaboration. It's not an area of competition either between companies, or organizations, or countries. In fact, there's international efforts and sharing of information. Among the international organizations you see on this slide are organizations that are similar to the Nuclear Waste Management Organization in Sweden, Finland, Belgium, Japan, and other European countries, where this is the accepted approach going forward, the international consensus. We're also involved with many Canadian universities to do the work to develop the safety case that's going to be important in going forward with the project. This is my last night. Timelines, just to leave you with a sense of the timelines that we're operating with. These are our planning timelines. That's not to say that we're going to hit them all, because this process, we're really embarking on collaboratively with communities, and so we're not controlling all the timelines. We need to do that together. But the site selection process, as I mentioned, has been underway since 2010. Preliminary assessments are ongoing in this year in 2017. And by the end of 2022, we are aiming that this preliminary assessment phase, including drilling boreholes, tubes, to explore subsurface geology, will be complete. And by 2023, we'll be in a position to identify a single site that would be the focus of detailed site characterization, which again is another more detailed phase of work involving hundreds of millions of dollars of study. And we'd like to focus that on one area with strong potential to move forward. And this all happens before going to the environmental assessment process. Once we start these detailed site characterization studies, we're going to begin to build the Centre of Expertise, which is also another important component of this project. So thank you for this opportunity to provide this quick overview of activities that the N W M O is leading on behalf of Canada, really for the long-term management of used nuclear fuel.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I have a question.
Yes.
So we look at this list of communities that are being considered, and you have two that are relatively close to here, Blind River and Elliott Lake. How would our community be engaged if one of those two communities was selected as the site?
I talked about the large size of the project. So we really understand that to direct the project, make the most out of the economic engine of the project, we need to try to have regional planning, to take advantage of all the opportunities around that. I mean, you are a hub in the area, so it would be important to involve you in discussions about that. And some of these communities are small, some smaller than others, and it's really going to take regional implementation to implement the project. I should just mention that there are a number of components of the project in addition to a deep geological repository. I mentioned the Centre of Expertise, but there's also other activities such as the fabrication of the emplacement container, which is steel and copper. There's also fabrication of the bentonite clay buffer box, and there's a number of other manufacturing and processing type of activities. In order to have good participation in an area, the placement of those activities and project configuration would be part of the conversation that would happen in the next phase of work.
So the ultimate point, though, that I was trying to get at, I think, is that the city's community, the city's community will be engaged if you're going to locate at a site that's in proximity to this city. At some point, you'd be back to the city to engage us in how this city embraced it or how this city could play a role if it was actually going to locate in this area.
Yes, we'd welcome the opportunity to come back and continue the conversation.
Because this is a long timeline. You seem like you're still quite a way off from determining where you're going to put this.
It is a long timeline, and we've got seven areas that we're still working in, in terms of looking at the safety considerations related to the quality of the rock. As we move further between now and 2020, end of 2022, 2023, we'll be continuing to narrow down. So as we get to a smaller number of areas that we're focused in, we'll get into more detail about regional implementation.
Okay, as Counselor Hollingworth.
Thank you. When this is up and running, I might still be on council at the age of 72. Wow. My question is, it's interesting, you talk about these smaller communities, and you touched briefly on transportation. And I'm assuming that transportation may involve rail, highway, possibly shipping. And the biggest challenge we have here in Northern Ontario, which I hope to see change sometime, is our highway system and our rail system. So having said that, if these other communities are successful and were involved somehow, how is your organization going to lobby the government provincially or federally to improve transportation? I would think this is going to be one of your deciding factors.
A couple of comments. First, just to say that we're looking at road and rail, and potentially a combination. We're not looking at shipping used nuclear fuel on the Great Lakes as we go forward to implementation. Some initial review of infrastructure, existing infrastructure associated with these communities was conducted as part of Phase One of the assessment. It's going, it can be transported, for instance, on regular trucks. We have had some initial conversations with folks that would need to be involved in transporting it by rail. We're also keeping abreast of the ongoing evolution of infrastructure, because we're aware that there's a number of activities in the province that could affect the quality of infrastructure. We regularly brief governments. It's early days for us from the point of view of the kind of conversations that you're talking about. The first shipment with the timelines that I gave you would be likely 2040. So there is some time to have the kind of conversations that you're looking at. But certainly, if it can't be transported safely, and the infrastructure has something to do with that, it will not proceed.
Okay. I'll have Counselor Nero next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'm looking at the map that shows more than 40 sites around the Great Lakes. I think it was in the O P G presentation. But when you talked about partnerships, international partnerships, is the U.S. a partner in all of this? Seeing that 40 sites around the Great Lakes store nuclear waste and mostly in the U.S.
In terms of sharing information and all the studies that are going on around the world, yes, everyone's sharing information, including the United States and all the work that was done at Yucca Mountain, which was a site they're examining. But from the point of view of implementing the repository, this repository that N W M O is moving forward with is for Canadian used nuclear fuel only. It will not take waste from the United States or any other country.
Okay. So in terms of the slide, it says this would protect the Great Lakes, the body of water that's in between Canada and the U.S. What kind of risk? I mean, we're trying to, we're doing, or your group is trying to do due diligence, to move the storage from an unsafe storage to a safe storage. And you're going to protect the Great Lakes by doing that. If the U.S. doesn't do that, what kind of risk is left? Is it still the same risk as if we did nothing?
I'd like to just say one thing. Where it's currently stored now, it is safe. It is safe. It's in licensed, regulated facilities. But the one thing about the current storage is you have to take care of it. The containers that the used fuel is in, I'm speaking specifically about used fuel, will wear out eventually. They're licensed for 50 years. They may last 100 years if we take care of them. But then you'll have to take the waste out and put them in new containers. So people will have to keep taking care of these facilities as long as they're on the surface. Once it is underground, it's a passive, it's a passive care of it. It can be contained and isolated without people taking care of it, and that's a real value. And lots of things can happen at the surface that won't affect what happens underground. So I think that all countries are moving to emplacing used nuclear fuel in deep geological repositories. And that would include the United States, well, a geological repository of some sort. So they've got ongoing activity themselves to take the waste from the current plants that are on the Great Lakes to a long-term facility. So they've got their own program. And with all these programs, irrespective of where the repository is located, it will not be licensed if it cannot contain and isolate it. And this means that radiation or contamination would not leak from the containers and interact with surface activities. So this is really what's required to demonstrate as part of the safety.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Karpadich.
Thank you, Mayor Provenzano. Just a quick concern I got. So how many nuclear plants are active and online right now in North America? Any idea? I got information, and from 2012, there was 102 in the States, for example.
Yeah, I'm afraid I don't have that information. Maybe Fred does, but the focus of N W M O is the management of the used fuel that exists. These decisions about whether or not to continue to create more of it and have nuclear power are really decisions outside of the N W M O.
Yeah. It certainly is a big concern, because what I'm gathering is that it's a hazardous material that's got a lifespan of a million years. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we're talking about licensing for 40 or 50 years?
Well, the deep geological repository would need to be able to be demonstrated. It could contain and isolate that waste for the hundreds of thousands of years needed. And so that's very important. That's different than interim storage. This is a long-term management approach. And I think one of the good things is, it is a hazardous material, but it's a solid. It's easy to manage at some level, and as a society, we have a lot of knowledge about how to do it. If we separate ourselves in distance, and if we put a barrier between the used fuel and ourselves, then we keep ourselves safe and the environment safe. So we know a lot about how to manage a material like this, and that's one of the, that's one of the good things, I would say.
So do you know if all the current storage processes are the same one right across North America? Are they all utilizing the same process? Or is there different processes that are being utilized?
So for interim storage, so the way the fuel is managed now, it's managed in containers that I'd say are licensed, and there's different container shapes and sizes, depending on whether you're talking about Ontario Power Generation used fuel, or New Brunswick Power used fuel, or Hydro Quebec used fuel. But they all use the same principles, to create a barrier, to separate it from people in the environment.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fatah.
Just one question, I guess, more or less curiosity, I guess. Would an area that has less dense population versus one that has high dense, would that be more of a preferred site, do you think? I'm just wondering whether in the selection process, whether you're looking for an area, for safety reasons, obviously, would you be looking at one that's less dense?
Well, from a safety point of view, population density doesn't factor into it, because it needs to be contained and isolated. From the point of view of people and where we want to see a facility like this, we may have preferences about that. And this map that I'm showing you, it shows the communities that came forward, but in fact, it's a broad area around them, including, well, Crown Land and the Canadian Shield and the northern communities that are part of what's being explored. So it's not necessarily right in the heart of even those communities, although from a safety point of view, that's not, that's not a concern.
Just one final question. Does, out of curiosity, does Elliott Lake have some sort of advantage because of its mine shafts? Would that come into play in terms of your choice or your selection?
The kind of rock that we're looking for is homogeneous rock without minerals in it. So a place that has had a mine is not necessarily attractive for this particular project, because it's had minerals in the past, and although it may not be economic anymore, in the future, it may become economic again. And we want to put the material in rock that doesn't have minerals in it, that doesn't have water flowing through it, which places with minerals often have water flowing, and that's how the minerals got there, and where it's going to be uninteresting to people to dig there.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I think that's, Counsel, you've got all the information that relates to these two projects now. We certainly appreciate your time and your attention. If you have nothing further to add, I think we'll move on at this point. Well, thank you very much. So, Madam Clerk, we're on the consent agenda. Before we get into consent, Counsel, I'm just gonna, although I can't determine it based on the report, I think the 6.15 I might have a conflict on, because it might involve a client from my office. So just in case it does, I'm going to declare a conflict on that.
I have a motion by Counselors Nero and Shoemaker. Resolve that all items listed, under date October 10, 2017, Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda, save and accept. Agenda Items 6.5, 6.6, and 6.15 be approved as recommended.
Counselor Shoemaker? Okay. 6.7 will be removed from consent. Anything, anybody with matters in the consent agenda, Counsel Butt, we'll start with you.
6.11, Stormwater Financing Study.
Okay. Go ahead.
And before you, but in the notes, it was 40-some thousand over the estimate, and that's unusual, when the total was 119,000. And we just say, okay, we're not doing a road project, so we'll proceed. It says, I just don't follow that. It seems an unusual conclusion to make. It's quite a bit over, and we're just saying, well, that's the way it is. We'll just take the money from here and go to there. Is it unusual? To whom do I address this?
Mr. Elliott?
Mr. Elliott. Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butt, and staff got a, this is the only time we've ever done a project like this, so it's unfamiliar to us. So we asked a couple of consultants what a good budget figure would be, and they gave us that number, and we, both of those numbers were below 60,000. So that was the budget we set for the study. Once we started researching the stormwater management fee proposal and set an RFP, sent a RFP out, when the prices came in, they were much higher. But there were quite a range. They ranged anywhere between They ranged anywhere between around 80,000 or so, up to 180,000. So we zeroed in on, the committee zeroed in on what we thought was the best fit for what we needed, and that's an engineering firm with a financial, a financial person that has done these kinds of studies for several other municipalities.
So it's unusual, but the committee decided this was the best decision?
Yeah, we don't often get, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Butland, we don't often get such a range.
Yeah.
Again, staff tried to get a budget figure early on in the process, and as we went through the process, we, we determined that there was more, we believe you're getting value for your dollar for this study. It's a, we believe it's a very important study to determine if there's a user fee similar to the sewer surcharge, sanitary sewer surcharge, just what this is. This is a study to determine whether the city should go the way of a storm sewer surcharge. And we believe there's value, the committee believes there's value for, for your dollar. We believe it's well spent.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
On the same matter, Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was the, through you to Mr. Elliott, was the RFP circulated only to folks on our approved bidders list, or was it put out sort of broadly?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Shoemaker, no, this was put out broadly. It wasn't, there wasn't a vendor record list that this would fall under.
Okay, so the responses we got back aren't only from, from people we asked to submit bids?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Butland, do you have any other matters in the consent? No? Seeing none, any other, Counsel? Counsel Kropodich.
Thank you, Mayor Provenzano. Just a question regarding Item 6.9.
Sure, go ahead.
That's the Connecting Links funding?
That's right.
And I guess my question will go to Director of Engineering, Don Elliott. I just want to say thank you for the report, Don. I thought it was good. I also support the resolution 100 percent. Seems like our municipality is getting squeezed quite regularly provincially with their responsibilities they're downloading to the municipality. With this, this item, if this item was not approved, Sault Ste. Marie is a candidate, would you expect that property taxes are going to go up?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Kropodich, I suppose that's the determination, counsel. We bring recommendations for reconstruction, capital works projects. We prioritize them for you. And my suggestion is if it's not approved this year, we'll just try again next year. It's identified as our number-one priority from a connecting link standpoint, and we'll just keep applying for it. It's significant funding. We're very hopeful that this year it'll be granted to us, because we fought very hard, and I believe other municipalities fought very hard, to get this kind of project eligible under the new connecting link framework.
If it is turned down, is there another option we could pursue?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Kropodich, an option for reconstructing or widening Black Road on her own, we could do that. I don't recommend it. I believe this will eventually be recognized as approved by MTO. If we get a message from them that they're not going to approve it, then we'll just move on to other resurfacing priorities, such as Trunk Road and the lower portion of Black Road.
Are there any other options as far as funding applications we could go after?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Kropodich, I'm not aware of any for connecting links. I, I note in the letter from, attached to the report, a letter from the regional director, he said, "You can consider using your OCIF funds for that." But of course, OCIF, OCIF funds, it's a, it's a formula-based, based on population. We get that money in any event, and that's, clearly that needs to go to Capital Works. Every municipality gets it. And we would rather not use our OCIF funds for connecting link projects. We want to use connecting link funds for connecting links.
Okay, understood. Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
No problem, Counsel Kropodich. Anybody else on that matter? Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Elliott, can we, I know that the sort of second priority project is resurfacing of Black Road from McNabb to Trunk, or from, Trunk Road from Black to the bypass. Can we submit those as, you know, backup applications?
Mr. Mayor to, to Counsel Shoemaker, I've talked to our representative about that. You can apply for multiple projects, but not if they would exceed the $3 million grant. And because Black Road will maximize the $3 million grant, then our recommendation is just to apply for the one project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else on that project? Counsel Fatah?
Elliott, I'm just curious about something. This, the funding for this project is under the assumption that this continues to be the only way for vehicles to travel east and west and south. We are doing this because that is still considered to be the, our, our bypass is Black Road to Trunk, Trunk back to the, back to the highway? Is that, we're, we're of the understanding that we're never going to have the, a true bypass, second line straight through to the highway?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Fatah, the EA and route planning for the bypass, the connection of Highway 17 through the second line of Black Road, that's been shelved for another seven or eight years. We pushed the MTO hard to reinstate that environmental planning. That's what we did in, in the letter. But under this current scenario, because they canceled that, those studies, then yes, we are stuck with Black Road, and it's a two-lane portion of the Trans-Canada Highway in, in a large urban center, and it needs to be widened. That's what gives this road such a priority. But we continue to push them very hard to reinstate the possibility of that connection, because it would eliminate several traffic lights, a few kilometers of Trans-Canada Highway, and, as well as two at-grade intersections with railways. It would be good to eliminate those from the, from the provincial highway.
So you're saying that we may not be looking for that option being available for at least seven, eight years? Is that what you said? We're, it's not going to be, be entertained for at least seven or eight years?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Fatah, I believe it was in 2014 that the ministry said we're not looking at route planning or environmental assessment work for 10 years. So I'm just saying we're probably seven years from them considering it again.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on that matter? Seeing none? Any other matters in the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? We can, oh, she's read the motion. We have a vote on the consent agenda with the exception of Items 6.?
5, 6.6, 6.7, and 6.15.
All in favor? Carried. So the only matter from consent left to deal with would be the one we pulled, 6.7, McMeekin Arena Mold remediation. Counsel Shoemaker?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess to Deputy CA O'Vaire, this is another $72,000 spent on the McMeekin, in addition to the money that was spent earlier this year on the CO2 remediation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Shoemaker, that is correct.
Okay. So that's the reason I asked for it to be pulled from consent, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I brought a motion earlier this year to see if we could dispose of the McMeekin. And shortly after that, we started incurring significant amount of bills with regard to the McMeekin. I'm still of the view that we should dispose of it, and so I don't agree that we should be spending more money on it.
Okay. Anybody else on that?
Recorded vote, please.
Yeah. So on the, on the McMeekin matter? So we'll start with Counsel Nero, then Counsel Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, when do we expect that report to come back regarding McMeekin?
The report regarding the West End Community Center?
The West End Community Center and the, we have a study going on for ice allocation report.
Ice utilization?
All of that.
We'll have, but Mr., we'll have Deputy CA O'Vaire speak to that.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Nero, we do expect the report to come back at the end of November with the ice utilization study. There were some delays in getting responses from the different user groups, but the consultant has all of those now and is analyzing the information.
So, okay, so we'll definitely have that before the end of the year, and we'll be able to make some decision, or you'll come with a recommendation on some decision for counsel to make regarding the replacement, the closing, the twinning, that kind of decision.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Nero, correct. We'll provide the consultant's report as information. I believe he is also scheduled to come to present to counsel at that time, and there'll be a recommendation made around the number of ice surfaces required in Sault Ste. Marie.
So that's a separate issue. So by the end of November, they will, I see your hand, Counsel Christian, by the end of November, they will make a recommendation on the number of ice surfaces that we need. I'm not sure that they're going to be in a position at that time to recommend the capital spend on the Meekin Center or whatnot, because I think they'd have to do additional work to say how to achieve those ice surfaces.
Yeah, I understand that, Mr. Mayor. I think somewhere, though, in, you know, in response to, you know, the comments that Counsel Shoemaker has brought up, I think we're in a catch-22 situation here. If we, it would be difficult just to stop spending money on the facility the way it is, to keep it running. If we just stop that, you know, we have, we don't have any idea until this report comes back on who we're impacting by doing that.
No, look, I mean, the facility is needed right now. Quite, we have a responsibility to operate a facility that the public can actually go in and be safe. So if, if we're not going to operate or spend, if we're not going to spend any more money on it, we're going to close it.
That's what I'm saying.
If we're going to close it, then we're, we saw what happened last year with the ice utilization and the demands for ice. So if we take the McMeekin out of the mix, we'll have to, we'll be taking a rink out of the play. Could the city get by without that? We'll have a better idea probably at the end of November, but right now, there, I know that there are demands on that ice time, and maybe we could have Mr. O'Vaire speak to the community groups that are waiting to use the McMeekin, but I think we would be creating a problem. Maybe this is the question. If we took that rink out of circulation immediately, would that create a problem in the system?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. The, the rink right now is fully allocated in terms of the prime time hours for the arena. And in fact, as recently approved with the Agoma District School Board, it's starting to be used during daytime hours as well.
And, and that's what my questions were geared to. I think we're, we're in a really bad situation here temporarily until these decisions are made. We just can't not approve spending money to keep the facility open.
Yeah, there's a larger issue here, and it goes to our asset management. And I think this council has an asset management plan, and we put some resources to it. But if you think about it, we earmarked 2.3 million a year, per year, but that's to manage all of our assets. It's all of the buildings, including this building, and every rink can all, so we don't have probably arguably a sufficient amount of money set aside annually to keep our buildings up. This happens to be one of the oldest ones, and obviously, its age is showing right now. Notwithstanding, we have an obligation to make sure it's safe for people to come in.
Right. And, and for people who are, you know, watching us on this decision, need to understand that, that yes, it could be perceived as throwing away bad money, good money after bad, but we are not in a position to just stop spending money on it. We have to keep the facility open. And, you know, this is one of the issues that came up, and I'm sure that by the time we make the final decision on what we're going to do, that there will be more issues that come up with it, and we'll be spending more money on it.
Counsel Bruni?
I guess a couple of my questions were answered, but to Deputy CA O'Vaire, regarding the mold, I know the McMeekin has been in operation for many years and experienced hot summer months, but I've never heard of mold problem before. Why would it be this year? Just curious, I mean, was there a difference of ventilation or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruni. The contractor doing the work had described it to me as a bit of a perfect storm of different circumstances. We had a lot of rain earlier in the summer, so there was lots of moisture in the ground, the way the rink is constructed and the pad, the floor in the arena. With that moisture in the ground, then the, the heat and the humidity late in the fall all contributed to this formation of mold in the dressing rooms. And, and then certainly the age of the facility and the age of the flooring that's in there, I'm sure played a, a factor in it as well.
Is there a preventive measure for next year, for next spring, if it's still in operation, or fall time, I'm sorry?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruni. Yes, the contracting firm that was in there has cleaned the dressing rooms, but also sprayed it with a, with a solution that is to prevent future outbreaks of mold.
Okay. And I guess my last question, and I do agree with Counsel Shoemaker and also Counsel Nero, but if we decided to close the McMeekin, how much time notice would you have to give to all these user groups that use this facility? Would it be a year or two? I mean, we don't have enough ice surfaces right now, and especially if the McMeekin closes. Is there something in the works if, if the McMeekin is closed? Do you have a plan of action to, for these groups? Is there a time limit?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruni. I would suggest that at a minimum, we would need a, a season in order to plan and prepare for the following year to try and accommodate user groups. And in that event, certainly, a number of the user groups would be faced with a decrease in ice time and not sufficient ice time for their programs. I would imagine they would all feel that they would be short the amount of ice they need in order to operate their full programming.
Thank you.
Counsel Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, you answer, or you asked the question I wanted to ask, and then Counsel Bruni asked the contingency plans. To Counselor Shoemaker's point, yes, it is, you don't want, really want to be spending money after, on a facility that is going to continue to drain funds, but it doesn't sound like we really have an option in terms of supplying the user groups what they need. So, I mean, I agree with what's being said here, but I think for the time being at least, until we get this, this report, we really have no choice. Thank you.
Counsel Kropodich, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor Provenzano. Just a question to Mr. O'Vaire. Are there any threats to anyone who's entering the arena right now? Never mind just the McMeekin, but the other arenas also covered in the municipality. Are there any threats to their health whatsoever, employees, players, coaches, anybody who enters the arenas?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Kropodich. Certainly, top of mind for staff is the safety of the citizens going into the arenas and the staff that work there. And we do not feel there's any safety risk to anybody entering the building. And certainly, in the case of the recent work in the McMeekin, we made sure we took all precautions before we allowed any citizens back in the arena and had an engineering firm sign off on air quality tests that everything was safe for people to enter the building. Thank you.
Counsel Fatah?
If the work gets done, when do you see it being opened?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Fatah, it is open now. The arena, the work has been completed and operating now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No other questions on that matter? We've been asked for recorded vote, so, Madam Clerk, we can have a recorded vote, please.
I'll read the motion first. A motion by Counselors Nero and Hoopinen, resolved at the report of the manager of Community Center stated October 10, 2017, regarding McMeekin Arena Mold remediation be received, and that counsel approved the use of the facility maintenance reserve up to $72,000 to fund the remediation.
Okay.
Counsel Butland?
Four.
Counsel Myers?
Four.
Counsel Bruni?
Four.
Counsel Nero?
Four.
Counsel Shoemaker?
Against.
Counsel Grandinetti?
Against.
Counsel Hollingsworth?
A four.
Counsel Hoopinen?
Four.
Counsel Kropodich?
Four.
Counsel Christian?
Four.
Counsel Fatah?
Four.
Counsel Turco is absent. Mayor Provenzano?
Four.
Motion carries.
Okay. So we are on Item 7 on the agenda?
7.2.1, the Rodent Abatement Program.
Okay, so, counsel, we are here again. I'd like to remind counsel that we've been here a couple times and have spent quite a bit of time on this. So we appreciate not investing the same amount of time this time. I can say that Counsel Myers, and who was the second or Counsel Myers?
Bruni.
Counsel Bruni have moved. Staff put the report before us. I thought it was a clear report. I thought everything was laid out well. They gave us two options. Either we discontinue it, or we issue an RFP for 2018. The current provider has been very clear that outside of the one-month extension to the end of October, they will not provide the service at the current rate, so there's no sense in getting into a big discussion about continuing it for November and December. It would be a matter of staff budgeting for this for 2018. Counsel Myers has moved, with Counsel Bruni seconding, the resolution that staff issue an RFP to seek residential Rodent Abatement Program, but the funds to be identified in budget 2018, in addition to the 29,000 annual budget currently established for this program. So that's the motion. for this program. So that's the motion that's going to be before us. That's the motion that you're going to debate. If that motion fails, and someone wants to move the other motion afterwards, so be it. But that's what's for us for debate. Counselor Myers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to be clear that the reason I wanted to put this forward is that I just want to close the door on getting the exact figures. It's been left a little bit open to us that it would be increased beyond the 29,000. I'd like to just have that information. So if we have to do it through getting the RFP, I think it's a fairly straightforward RFP, because we've done it in the past. I don't think it's an onerous task to ask staff to do it. So I'd like to have the RFP issued so that we have actual costs, that we know what we're going to or not going to proceed with. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, understood. So Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to that, to the RFP, if I remember the discussion last time around, I'm not clear on how I remember it correctly. If we do an RFP, are we committed to doing the program? We don't. There was, there was one-
I don't believe we are, but I'm not going to answer that. I think you should get Legal to answer that, or someone else in senior staff to answer that.
Through, I'll go ahead. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero, when we put the RFP together, again, it's, it's for a proposal, so we're not necessarily stuck to any firm proposal. So if you go to a tender, you're, you have to accept that, but if you go to a proposal, you have the option. Now, again, if there's something else that should be added to that, I don't know, but that's how I clearly understood it.
So just so I'm clear, we can do the RFP, it can come back to council, and we can then decide, say, although it came into eye, we're just going to not do the program? We're okay with that?
I think if, the RFP can also be explicit about that, too, that the subject council approval.
Okay, and just one other question, Mr. Mayor. If we take staff's recommendation, the first recommendation to discontinue the program, and it talks about that staff coordinate services, Building Division, the Innovation Center, Oklahoma, to continue the operation of the online program to assess and track hotspots. We talked about this last time around, and I'm assuming that we're already doing that now. So what happens when we have assessed and we track the hotspots? What are we going to do? What's the next step after that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero, this is Deputy CEO Verz's report, but I can certainly, whenever we looked at this originally, because I was first part of this program when we went through and debated this endlessly last time, we found that when we put this program together and we put the education program into place so that we could find the hotspots, it was to identify for those who are living in those areas also, that if they see the need to hire, you know, enforcement, or, not in this case enforcement, but to hire a service to come and take care of the rats, they can. And it also creates an opportunity for us to see what's going on and what may be causing it. Is it happening in an area of town where, you know, there's been accumulation of either feed, stock, or building materials, or something like that? Part of the education program also teaches you how to clean it up and correct the problem. So that's why you want to put this in place, and it is in place. I've actually went online more than once myself, just to look at it and see how it was progressing, and it is showing you the hotspots. You have the opportunity to submit your name. You have the opportunity to pick out the exact spot on your property where it's, you're identifying that you've actually seen a rodent. So the education program that we're asked to put in place is working, and I think is successful.
I guess I'm missing something, because we want to track the hotspots. Once we've identified them, and we have them on our website, and we have a resident that comes to us that lives in that neighborhood and has a problem, are they not just going to come back to us and say, you've identified a hotspot, and you're not doing anything about it? If, if not their problem, but it, we've identified it, that there's something that's causing this hotspot?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero, again, we have that opportunity through the Building Department to send someone out to identify, to see what may be causing the issue. If it's an issue that's on a private sector, those persons could be informed. There's also one, part of the education program, even through Oklahoma Health, was to provide, you know, hand documents that can be put in their mail to let them know, you should clean up your backyard. If it's something the city can address and has to address through enforcement, certainly that opportunity is there.
So I guess that's what I was looking for. Once we, once we've identified this hotspot, we're going to take the next step and try to rectify.
Yeah, the information is used. The educational, there's the educational component, but then there's the component of assessing maybe what the cause of, of the appearances are. Counselor, sorry, Deputy CEO Verz has got something to add here.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero, I was just going to add that the Innovation Center has done a similar program in the past with bear sightings, where if there has been, have been a number of sightings in a neighborhood, that information is provided to the residents and reminding them about the importance of, you know, putting away bird feeders, you know, taking care of garbage, all those types of things. And a similar thing can happen with the rodent abatement.
Okay, so on rodent, so Counselor Christian, and then Counselor Butland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, you know, we're, if we entertain the idea of an RFP, is the goal of the RFP, like, we want to put a program together, is this just going to react to the issues that are out there? Are we actually going to be spending money eliminating a problem? That would be my question to Mr. Verz. And it has, I think it has some relevance, because you can, you can react to the calls that come in, and we can say we're doing something about it. Or we could spend perhaps arguably a lot more money to put together an offense that may eliminate the problem. I guess I'm not sure where the RFP is supposed to go.
It would be the same service that we currently provide.
So it's just reacting and not really solving the problem?
Yeah, it would, it's the same service. They would be RFPing for the same service we currently provide.
Okay, and is it fair to say then, here, that, that the program that we offer right now is to react to the complaints that come in, but doesn't really get to the heart of the issue when it comes to rats in Sioux St. Marie?
It's a responsive program that goes out to deal with the rats.
Fair enough.
Counselor, sorry, Counselor Bruni, then Counselor Butland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Myers and myself are, we're just saying, come back with an RFP. What will it cost to provide it for one-year service? It's going to come back to budget time, and then it's up to council to dictate if, if it's affordable or not. And why not go out and get the RFP? And then we can have more of a debate later instead of-
Okay, Counselor Butland?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was in favor of this rodent abatement program when it came before us last time. This, I'm not sure. I guess my question would be, how many calls have we received, and is there satisfaction by the people who are calling in? And I have to say that I've had four calls in the past, was it a year or so, about this, and three of them called back and said, the abatement officer came out and said, there's no rat problem here, and that was it. So suffice to say, they probably weren't happy. Do we monitor the number of calls and whether people are satisfied or not? And if the service is a viable, reliable, effective program, maybe yes, but if not, maybe not. Do we monitor? It's in the report, I'm told.
Yeah, yeah, I think it is, Counselor Butland, but we can have the Deputy CEO speak to that briefly.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butland, yes, we do monitor the calls, and from the calls, there were 725 site visits and 2,700 follow-up visits. Probably important to mention for residents that when the contracting firm goes out, unless they see burrows, they are not putting the traps down there. So someone just seeing a rat doesn't necessarily mean that they are going to have the abatement program put down on their property.
Thank you. I did read the report, but not today.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so Counselor Kompadich, hopefully we can end with you.
Yeah, just one, one last question. So we've identified where the hotspots are, but I just want to know if the trend is, is the trend increasing with the rat problem in Sioux St. Marie or not? And kind of goes in hand in hand with Counselor Butland was talking about, about the phone calls and the follow-ups, because within the last two weeks, I got several phone calls about rats in our area in Ward 6. So is the trend increasing or not regarding the hotspots?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kompadich. At this time, it's, it's, I would say steady. We're not seeing an increase or decrease, but we're receiving about the same number of calls as we have in previous years.
Are the hotspots increasing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kompadich. At this, no, the hotspots aren't increasing. They're tracking the number of calls that are there, or incidents where the firm goes out.
Okay, thank you. So we understand the motion before us, council. All in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 7.5.1, zoos and wildlife sanctuaries have a motion by Councilors Nero and Shoemaker resolved that the report of the solicitor prosecutor dated October 10, 2017, concerning possible ways to regulate zoos and wildlife in the city of Sioux St. Marie be received, and staff be directed to incorporate the attached schedule into the animal control bylaw to prohibit animal performances within the city of Sioux St. Marie.
Okay, so council, I found this report complicated, maybe would be the right word. So I had, I know there might be a lot of questions about it. What I'm going to ask the city solicitor to do is maybe just give us an overview of what the legal department was requested, and generally what the legal department is recommending, and then we will have the, we have the motion before us. If there's any confusion or question on the motion, we'll restate it, and then we'll, we'll move forward. Because I think there's two elements to this report. There's the element that relates to the schedule that is going to be proposed to be attached, but then there's the element that relates to the regulation or permission of zoos within the city of Sioux St. Marie. So they're two separate, they're two separate issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give an overview of the report, and it is a rather complicated report, and I can tell you that it reflects the end result of weeks of work with Jeff King, who's our prosecutor, and our articling student, communication with other municipalities, review of the legislation, review of the current legislation and the current situation in Sioux St. Marie. And as you might expect, zoos are not something with which most lawyers are familiar or law students, so it was, there was a lot of work that went into it. And it's complicated, I guess, because the landscape is rather complicated. We currently have an animal control bylaw that lists a number of exotic animals that one is not permitted to keep. In addition to that, the Ministry of Natural Resources licenses people that are going to keep local wildlife, so bears or mountain lion, a mountain lion, a cougar, something that would be local to the city in this area. You can get a license that, for that animal to be kept. The OSPCA looks at cruelty and deals with situations where an animal is not being kept properly or is being neglected. If you do not have an OSPCA officer in your locale, which is our situation, the police can do that. So when we looked at the possibility of what we could do to regulate zoos in Sioux St. Marie, really, three options came out. The first would be to do nothing, to leave it with the existing legislation, which is our animal control bylaw that says you cannot keep certain exotic animals. Cruelty is dealt with through the OSPCA Act, OSPCA officers and police, and licensing where bears would be kept or something of that nature that would be wildlife local to this area. That's option one. Option two would be to allow zoos, but the city would license them or regulate them. And that has been done in certain municipalities. Muskoka Lakes, I think, is one that has it. That is probably our least preferable option, because it's really licensing something with which we are not very familiar, and we're not experts. And I think in Muskoka Lakes, I wish Mr. White were here tonight, because I believe it is the city clerk who is charged with the duties of going to check and make sure that the zoo meets all the, all the conditions. It's really something that we are not, in my view, expert enough to, to manage. Also, if we, if we are licensing zoos, that means in the event of default, where the zoo is in default, we would have the obligation to go and correct that situation. That might mean retrieving animals, and it might mean housing them for a period, or maybe longer. I don't know that we, I know we don't have the infrastructure to do that properly. And then the final option, in terms of zoo regulation, would just be to completely prohibit zoos within Sioux St. Marie. And in that case, we would say, I don't, you may well be licensed to house a wild animal like a bear. You may well meet the criteria, and you're doing so in a, in an appropriate fashion and not a cruel fashion, but we just don't allow them in our municipality. We can, we can do that. If that option is taken by city council tonight, if there are existing zoos in Sioux St. Marie, that will have to be addressed, probably through the courts. I guess I would say in terms of procedural fairness, given, if it's going to be illegal to have a zoo in Sioux St. Marie, we need to go to court, we need to get a conviction, we need to get an order to have the animals removed. So just in terms of procedural fairness, I would say if that is the option that council adopts, which I think is probably the most sensible option, there should be some timeframe to allow anyone who is not currently in compliance to get in compliance. And the final piece that the mayor mentioned, which just deals with exhibitions, the prosecutor is suggesting that we amend our current bylaw so that all animal exhibitions will be prohibited in Sioux St. Marie, not just ones at city facilities. And it's going to be worded in such a way that domestic animals will not be permitted to perform either, but there will be certain exemptions, as we've heard from groups like, for example, equestrian clubs and so forth, that say we want to, we're treating our animals very humanely. And part of the reason that we have them is for exhibitions. There would be certain exemptions for those type of animal shows. So I apologize that it's so long and complicated. I think it was really in the interest of thoroughness that it was presented like this.
Okay, so the motion before us receives the report for information, and then moves to incorporate the schedule that staff has developed into the animal control bylaw. It doesn't do anything with respect to the options that legal has outlined with respect to zoos, option 1, 2, 3. Now, option 1, which is the status quo, stays if we take no action. So the point is, if council's looking for action on option 2 or option 3, you would have to specifically move that action, because it's not in the, the report, because obviously staff doesn't pick which one of these options that we follow. So if this motion passes, you just have that bylaw, that schedule incorporated into the bylaw. If you want to take any other action, you'd have to do that by way of a separate motion. Okay. Yeah, we'll take questions now. So we're going to start with Counselor Hoopinen.
Thank you, Mayor. To Ms. Kenny, for the, the first, the bylaw where we're going to prohibit all animals, there are two on the list of exemptions that I would like to have removed. I don't know if it's easy to do it by this way, but I don't believe that we should have rodeos, and I don't believe we should allow greyhound racing, because both of those, or, both of those events do have animal cruelty involved. So I would not want that to be exempt. Is it, is it possible to remove those two?
So that would be, you'd have to move that removal, and then you'd have to get a second or, and then we would debate that, because the motion is to approve this schedule as it's attached.
Okay.
Right? And then, so if you want to remove those two events, you'd move that. And if it was seconded and passed, then, and this passed, it would be passed without those in it.
I'd like to move that, Mayor, if I may, and would I have a second or?
So Counselor Myers seconds that.
Thank you.
So it's removing horse racing, oh, sorry.
Greyhound.
Rodeos and-
And greyhound.
Greyhound racing. Okay, so we got a mover and a second on that amendment. Anybody speaking, we've had Counselor Hoopinen speaking in favor of it. Do you have anything else to say in favor of it, Counselor Hoopinen?
No, it's good.
Anybody want to speak opposed to it? Seeing none, can I have a vote on that amendment? All in favor? So I'd need to see the hands here, council. All in favor? Okay, that carries. So the exemptions are amended, so now we have the amended motion ahead in front of us. Any questions on the motion in front of us? Any questions- Any questions, staff? Sorry, we had Counsel Hoopanen. Are you done, Counsel Hoopanen?
A few, please, thank you.
Go ahead.
For Ms. Kenny, bylaw 81180, and I'm not gonna read the whole bylaw, but what I'm, what I'd like to point out is it, it's a bylaw to prohibit the keeping of certain kinds of animals. Now, this was in 1981, it was quite a while ago. And the exemptions says that it does not apply to the keeping of an animal listed of the kind listed in Schedule A, in the places or circumstances provided for in Schedule B. Now, what it says is that, it says that on the premises, this is an exemption that was approved in 1981, on the premises of a park, zoo, or animal display operated by or on behalf of the corporation of the city of Sault Ste. Marie. Does this mean that any other operation outside of these parameters are not operating legally? Now, I, I'm thinking that this is an old bylaw, and it was likely put in, in the days when we had the zoo at Bellevue Park. But since, we've had facilities opened after that, so is this just something that's old? And I'm just curious.
Well, it is an old bylaw, but I'm, I don't really understand your question, Counsel Hoopanen. Do you understand what Counsel Hoopanen's asking, Counsel, City Solicitor?
I, I think so.
Okay, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hoopanen, I think you're, I think you've basically nailed it. It's an old bylaw at a time when the city, in fact, operated a zoo. If there is a zoo or whatever, whatever other noun you'd like to use that is keeping animals, our bylaw would say, if you are on that list of prohibited animals, you cannot keep them regardless of what you call yourself.
Thank you. That's what I thought as well, so that, that clears that up for me. Thank you. I have another couple of questions, if I may, please, Mayor.
Go ahead.
The question, the next question stems from the July 17th council report on amendment to bylaw 2012 and 2013. On page 3, it says, "Further from, further from the legal department's perspective, we," meaning legal, "recommend council approach this bylaw amendment from a public safety perspective, as opposed to an animal welfare one, given that a municipality has jurisdiction to regulate for public safety." Now, when I read the report that was given to us for this meeting, there was no mention at all of any, any public safety, which, which does concern me, because that, I think, is, is important, and there's no legislation out there to, to, to protect the public from, from situations that could possibly happen. So I guess my question to that, for, for that point would be, would it be safe for me to assume that public safety would be top priority in any other instance?
City Solicitor, do you have an answer for that?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hoopanen, public safety is, of course, a priority for, for the city and for legislators, and us drafting bylaws, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to hear that. Thank you, Nula. Thank you, Ms. Kenny. The Ministry of Natural Resources provides licenses to keep specially, specially protected game wildlife in a zoo. That license that they provide has five conditions that should be followed. None of them, none of the, none of the conditions pertain to public safety. The MNR license also only issues licenses for native wildlife. Therefore, if a zoo has two lions and a cougar or anything that's not native, they are not licensed under the MNR or any other provincial legislation. Is that a correct statement, Ms. Kenny?
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Hoopanen, yes, it is.
Thank you. Question number four that I have, local municipalities have an inherent responsibility to keep its citizens safe. If council asked for a report on how we could implement a bylaw regarding public safety in zoos, what would you say to that? But I think I know the answer, Ms. Kenny, but what would you say to that? Would, would that be overwhelming?
Well, I think, I think it's, it's essentially addressed in this report.
Yeah.
In that, what you're talking about is, is the municipality regulating zoos and becoming involved in regulation of zoos. Whatever you'd like to add to that, City Solicitor, you're welcome to.
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hoopanen, I don't think we have the expertise to regulate zoos, but we certainly have the authority and power to prohibit them completely.
Okay, that's good. That's what I thought as well, thank you. Since zoos pose a risk to the public, and since we don't actually have infrastructure to regulate zoos, are you proposing that council move forward the recommendation number 3 from legal, which would ban zoos in Sault Ste. Marie? And the reason I'm asking that is I did distribute before the council meeting some examples of incidents that have happened at various zoos in Ontario that ended a lot of times in tragedy. So again, I'm emphasizing the public safety element here. So I, I, again, I wanna stress that. So am I correct in saying that that's why you're recommending number 3?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hoopanen, the, the report doesn't make a recommendation in the interest of having, I guess, a fulsome discussion at council about it. And I guess the practical concern about option 3 about prohibition, which I do recommend, I guess legally, is there is practical application concerns. It's much like when building issues an order to demolish a building, you can't say forthwith on that order. It takes some time to demolish a building. If you're saying that zoos are prohibited tonight, the animals have to go somewhere. So just in terms of procedural fairness, I would recommend that it be staged in so that anyone that is not in compliance would have an opportunity to do that. I'd put that caveat on it.
Okay, that sounds, and one last question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. If there's an organization that is available out there that could currently rehome any zoo, any animals in zoos that cannot be accommodated any longer, at no cost to the city or to the owners of these people in the zoos, would that help the process along?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hoopanen, I just don't wanna leave anybody with the impression that a bylaw could be passed tonight that would prohibit zoos and animals in an existing zoo would be removed tomorrow. There is an intervening court application that would have to take place. That is a prosecution. The court would look at whether or not the bylaw was, was valid, whether or not the elements of the offense are there, and that the removal of the animals would be court ordered. So it's, it's not instantaneous.
Okay, fair enough. Now, the MNR license, it, will that pose a problem for the bylaw once the renewal for a zoo that is operating expires and has to be replaced? Would, would that be an issue?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hoopanen, if you're saying, well, would that be a defense that could be raised by someone if they had an MNR license? If that's the question, I mean, I think it would be something that would complicate the prosecution.
Okay, good. And just one last point, if I may, and I do have some comments for later. Again, the MNR does not license exotic wildlife, so if there are any, any exotic, exotic animals in any kind of zoos there operating, from what I gather from our conversation, illegally. Am I correct in saying that?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hoopanen, I just wanna be careful. If there is someone operating a zoo and has exotic animals, they'd be operating contrary to our list of animals that you cannot keep.
Already, notwithstanding any changes that were made tonight.
Correct.
All right, that's good. Thank you, Mayor.
I somehow got my list of speakers caught up in all of the motions I signed, was signing there. So I think I had a list, but until I find it, we'll just go with Counsel Myers.
I really only have one question through you, Mr. Mayor, to our City Solicitor, Nula. You mentioned in your, when you were trying to give us a good overview there, and thank you for that, timeframe to get in compliance in option 3. That was your, your wording, and you're speaking to, to it again now. Could you give us some sense, if we chose to go with option 3, which is prohibit, prohibit zoos from the city of Sault Ste. Marie, number one, the bylaw's not written, correct?
Correct.
Number two, if there was a, let me ask it this way, would the bylaw officer be the one who would go and seek and find if we have a zoo that is operating when in fact we don't permit zoos, if we went with option 3? Or would it be dependent upon a complaint? Or how would that process work? I'm trying to get a sense of overall timelines. There is a zoo that operates in the city. So can we look at a definitive timeline? I think Counsel Butler and I both feel that if we went this route, can we define a timeline by which compliance could be achieved? And it may be two years, it may be one year, it may be, obviously, it's not tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. So can we, do we need to add that in if we went that route, Mr. Mayor, for a timeline? Or how should we handle that?
I think the most you can do tonight is direct the legal department to draft a bylaw for your review and approval. The bylaw's not gonna be approved tonight. There would be...
Right.
Those details would have to be worked out. So they're not gonna draft a bylaw for our approval unless you tell them to. So you can give them some parameters within which you're comfortable, but the council, the city staff have not put their minds to drafting a prohibition bylaw, because this is the first time, this is before us.
Okay.
So that, that bylaw would come back to us for debate and discussion and, and decision. So this would be a motion to direct them to do that, but it wouldn't be the passing of a bylaw. That passing of a bylaw would not occur until it came back.
Okay, and where I'm going there is that we did receive correspondence from an operator that does have animals that, should such a bylaw be created, would be noncompliant, and has indicated to us that there is an age factor involved in some of the animals currently and so on and so forth. So, and there is no intention to continue to expand and so on and so forth. So where I'm trying to get to here is whether or not we can try and find that, that if we decide we wanna go forward and have, no longer have zoos able to operate in Sault Ste. Marie, at the same time, coming back to Nula's words, timeframe to get in compliance, I have no sense of what that timeframe could be, and I'm sure neither does the operator of the current nature park. So can we get some sense of timeframe as you see it, Madam Solicitor?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers. I would like to get some advice on that from animal experts, to see what would be involved if a party was operating a zoo and were interested in complying before a certain date. But I don't think six months is unreasonable, a year, something like that. I think it would be a big project to move these type of animals. And the owner would, would have to want to do that.
Yeah. Whether an owner complies or not becomes a secondary issue. And my only other thought there is, I think we have to be cognitive that it's, it's mid-October in northern Ontario, so it may be reasonable to be looking at a year versus six months. And that's my only comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I have Counsel Shoemaker, then Counsel Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on, I think what Counsel Hoopanen and Myers were both getting to, and I, I don't know if Counsel Hoopanen moved the motion, but I'd be prepared to either move or second or support some type of motion that asks that they prepare a bylaw on option 3 and bring back a recommendation on a timeline. I think that's generally what Ms. Kenny was getting to, but something along those lines where we, we direct, the general direction we wanna go in, but we, we, I, I don't know if, if six months or two years is appropriate. So I'd like to get that information from staff.
Okay, so Counsel Hoopanen would probably be willing to second that motion? Okay. So let's deal with the motion that's ahead of us first, and then we'll get to that motion. I think the motion that's in front of us doesn't, no one has, seems to have any concern or contention with, which is to include that schedule as amended into the current bylaw. So can I have a vote on that motion as amended? All in favor? So that motion's carried. Okay, so now we have a second motion before us. Counsel Butler, you, you seem...
Question about...
The second motion.
The legal side of it.
Yeah. Okay, so the second motion before us is moved by Counsel Shoemaker, seconded by Counsel Hoopanen, and that's a motion to direct staff to draft a bylaw in accord with its prescribed option 3 of its report of today's date for return to council for its review and approval. Okay?
With the recommendation on the timeframe to implement it.
Yeah, which, which will include a timeframe recommendation. Okay, so that's the motion that's ahead of us. I think the clerk and the city solicitor have a gist of that. So we'll have a discussion and debate on that motion now. And you have a question, Counsel Butler?
Yes, and just one, I'm of the mind with Counsel Myers, the thought, but let's face it, we're talking about Spruce Haven here, and I guess my question on legal here, I'm all for the prohibition as, as draconian as it should be or must be, or, well, with safety and all these other concerns, but Spruce Haven's been there for almost 30 years. Would we be able to put legally, wrong term grandfather, but not say it's a year or two years until this particular zoo is no longer, they're no longer interested in running that zoo? Could we put that in the bylaw legally?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butler. Yeah, that would be council's privilege.
Thank you.
If that was the direction.
Thank you.
Okay, so anything else on, any, Counsel Hollingsworth, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to Nula. You're talking about, obviously, zoos, existing zoos and, and within the city and so forth. I just want some clarification. In your report, you also talk about exotic animal performances, again? Just clarification on that area. As you know, animals obviously should not be abused and so forth, absolutely not. But there are some organizations from outside of the city that do come to our city to educate our students, our schools, on how to take care of animals. For example, Science North, they visit our school system often, and often they will have local native animals like beavers, as an example, to educate our students. Toronto Zoo, Toronto Zoo has a very good reputation for taking care of their animals, and sometimes they have traveling exhibits to come and educate rural areas where kids can't get to southern Ontario to visit these type of zoos. So going back to, again, performances, granted, Science North and, and Toronto Zoo, they don't really have performing animals, but technically, they are coming to our city, and they may set up for a temporary portion within our city to educate our students. So how is this going to impact those reputable groups?
And through you, Mr. Mayor, the way it's currently worded, the animal portion of that, the live animal portion of that would not be allowed. They'd have to do their teaching and examples without the actual animal present.
Okay, I would hope that maybe we can reconsider that, because University of Toronto does research, as you know, all across Canada. I'm just using them as example. They have very high skilled, well-trained, highly educated professionals, from veterinarians to researchers. And it'd be a sad day if they did come to our city and we say no, when we know they have an excellent reputation. So I don't know how we can maybe make a friendly amendment, but in all honesty, those are good people.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, actually, you know, a university is an exemption, but the other facilities that you're setting, like Science North, or the Toronto Zoo, or the San Diego's for, for that matter, if they were to come and, and do a show, like it seems that the gist of what you're saying is that if it was educational in nature and it was a reputable agency, what harm would it be? I guess, I guess I'd have to think about that, because there's so many, that would be a nice dodge for people that were not reputable, that were saying this is educational and then I am reputable. So I'd, I'd wanna think about that wording on that.
Yeah, good point. And as you've clearly said, in all due respect, you're very good at what you do, but in all due respect, you have to dig further into the law around animals, and maybe you may have a chance to take, make a phone call to Toronto Zoo and ask them, because, again, they go up to a lot of these different schools. When, or maybe we as council may make an exemption, saying, okay, hypothetically, I don't know, you, we're learning together. But maybe Toronto Zoo has some type of international designation that's very hard to get, kinda like a ISO company or, or, you know, some specifics, maybe that can be built into our bylaws, to saying if they have this designation recognized by professional zoos around the world, then we as council can make an exception that these people are welcome to come to our city to educate our students here.
And again, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Hypothetically.
I'm getting, I'm a little lost here. I, I think we're, we're off track. The, the... The motion that we passed was to incorporate a schedule into our existing bylaw. And that schedule's to prohibit circuses. Like, so that's, none of the things that you've described would fall into this discussion. So we passed a, we've amended our current bylaw to prohibit circuses. But if, like, an educational was coming here from some reputable institution, I don't see it being caught up by this.
Well, I think, I think that has to be clarified and clear because I just asked that first question before I go into this debate with our legal counsel. And she said, yes, they would be falling under this.
There's a second thing here, which is, are we going to prohibit zoos or not? And if you prohibit zoos, then that bylaw's going to come back here. I think what the legal counsel's saying is if we prohibit zoos, that's going to apply to zoos, whether it's the Toronto Zoo or a Sault Ste. Marie Zoo. If we prohibit zoos, we prohibit zoos. But there's nothing in the circus prohibition that's going to catch what you're saying.
Granted, but I still think it's important for us to make this awareness, create this awareness as our legal continues on working and educating all of us on this. I don't, and this is all, I think it's really important.
So on the motion that's before us, are we ready to vote on the motion that's before us? I'm taking that as a yes? So all in favor? Opposed? Yeah, that's right. So the motion's carried, okay? So that motion's carried. So staff has that direction now. They will bring back a bylaw for our review and approval, which bylaw will be debated at a further meeting at council. Okay, thank you. So we are moving on to section eight of the agenda.
Under Agenda, item 8.1, Smart Cities Challenge. A motion by councillors Butland and Shoemaker. Whereas Infrastructure Canada is developing and will be running a Smart Cities Challenge. And whereas the Smart Cities Challenge will be soliciting submissions from cities and First Nation communities of all sizes across the country. And whereas there are substantial funding opportunities for a city or First Nation if its submission wins the Smart Cities Challenge. And whereas Mayor and staff have met with a representative of the Smart Cities Challenge and expect the competition to begin by the end of the year. And whereas the city of Sault Ste. Marie has begun to prepare to participate in the Smart Cities Challenge and wants to ensure it submits the best bid possible. Now therefore be it resolved that City Council endorse the city of Sault Ste. Marie making a submission to the Smart Cities Challenge and directs the mayor to strike a Smart Cities Challenge task force, including city staff, the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Centre and the Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation, along with any other partners or parties necessary to develop a compelling smart city submission.
So thank you to councillor Butland and Shoemaker for putting your names on this. Council, I was not intentionally ambiguous about the task force. It's just that as this develops and escalates, more, different people might have to be brought in. We don't know where this bid will go. So I don't want to prescribe the actual constituent members of this group because then I would have to come back here and have you folks change it as kind of time went on. I think it's a really exciting opportunity. I'm excited about what the city has to offer. And I think it'd be great to get us thinking about these things together as a community. And frankly, there's $270 million prize money to be had here. It doesn't require matching funds. And there's lots of positive work going on in the city that I think we can kind of capitalize on, a lot of good collaboration. So we're excited about this. I'd like your endorsement to move ahead with it. And as it evolves, if any of you want to participate with me in putting it together, I'd be happy to have your participation. Councillor Butland?
Comments, not questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, excellent, Mr. Mayor. And the federal government has come through with this program. And the first prize is $50 million and...
We don't qualify for that one.
We don't. There's two $10 million ones and one $5 million for smaller communities and a $5 million award for indigenous communities. And are we, can we, should we become a smart community? I say we already are, folks. Councillor Shoemaker's dissertation a couple of weeks ago put us on a path. Not all of it is endemic to what we're talking about here. But the things we have in alternative energy and the potential for a smart grid and our energy storage project. And upstairs, we've got, I don't know how many folks, over 40, working in innovation, in the Innovation Centre. And our Geomatics Centre is recognized, and I say this every year or so, worldwide by ESRI, which is an international organization that recognizes geomatic centers. And you can just quote, they say that Sault Ste. Marie is at the forefront in the world in this initiative. It's all about data collection and how you use it. And usually, that's for water or the sewer. But this is all-inclusive. And their partnerships, their partnerships in Sault Ste. Marie, there are about 30 of them. They provide data to all of these people, classified confidential information is fed into the Innovation Centre. And again, the awards that ESRI Canada states that Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Centre is leading the world in health geomatics. And I know from time to time, people say, yeah, sure. That's, you know, I don't, I find that hard to believe. For heaven's sakes, if you haven't already done so, get upstairs and talk to Paul and the staff. And they will educate, as I have been. And I'm the least technical of this whole group, probably. But this smart community, smart cities initiative is fantastic. And I really think we're only wanting smart. We want to make ourselves smarter. And maybe we can educate other communities. So indeed, Mr. Mayor, this is an exciting project. And Godspeed to all of us. Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor? Carried. 8.2 has been pulled at the request of the mover. We're going to move it to the next council meeting when a representative of tourism, Sault Ste. Marie, is here in the event that you have any questions of that individual. So 8.2 is pulled by the mover and seconder and will be moved to the October 24th meeting?
23.
23rd, the October 23rd meeting. So that brings us to 8.3. This is councillor Shoemaker's motion. And Madam Clerk, if you can read the motion?
A motion by councillors Shoemaker and Nero. Whereas in April 2013, city staff reported to council on options to remove the MS Norgoma from the Bondar Marina. And whereas at the time, the water levels in the St. Mary's River meant that the removal effort would require dredging the Bondar Marina in order to successfully remove the MS Norgoma from the Bondar Marina. And whereas 2017 has seen high river and lake water levels across the sea. And whereas the high water levels may provide an opportunity to remove the MS Norgoma from the Bondar Marina without the requirement to dredge the Marina. And whereas the MS Norgoma cannot be removed from the Bondar Marina without a plan in place for where the ship should go and what improvements should be made to the Bondar Marina. Now therefore be it resolved that city staff report back to city council on the following. Number one, options for removing the MS Norgoma from the Bondar Marina, including the cost of removal, where the ship will be brought, and options for what can be done with the ship on a permanent basis and potential funding sources to achieve this. Number two, recommended improvements to the Bondar Marina, including the cost of implementing said improvements and identifying potential funding sources for those improvements. And further, that staff examine as part of the review of recommended improvements to the Bondar Marina, whether the Bondar Marina could be used as an outdoor skating rink in the winter and options, as well as the cost of said options for the reinstallation of the section of the boardwalk that had previously been in the Bondar Marina.
Okay, so councillor Shoemaker, do you want to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many know, this is my first term on council. But looking back at the history of all the times this issue has been before council, it must feel like déjà vu to those around the table who have been here for a few terms. In doing my research for tonight's meeting, I went through old news articles. And I found what is probably much of what you'll hear again tonight, repeated over and over with the hope of sending a lifesaver out for the Norgoma. This matter has been before council for at least 17 years, starting with the 2000, 2003 term of council. In 2002, councillor Turco will recall that the first time I could find recorded, the council considered the fate of the Norgoma. The board of the museum ship said at the time that it intended to raise $750,000 to secure a grant to refurbish the ship and build an interpretive centre. Four years later, in 2006, early 2006, councillors Turco and Butland will recall that the Norgoma was again in front of council, promising a, quote, "major spruce up", despite the fact that the report before council at the time said that the ship had been unable to develop as a money-making tourist attraction. In the last 31 years, it had been an operating venture. Councillor Butland said at the time it was time to, quote, "abandon ship". The next year, in 2007, a motion was brought forward to cut the Norgoma's base funding. Councillors Turco, Butland and Myers will recall a discussion where, quote, "Councillor Myers blasted council for trying to make decisions about the Norgoma without fully informing itself." I suspect that we will hear similar arguments made tonight. Though this was already five years beyond the first time the Norgoma's fate was considered at council, still the ship itself was not self-sufficient. In 2013, councillors Turco, Butland, Myers, Fatta, Cromptich, Bruny and Nero and Christian will recall, a lengthy discussion took place on the fate of the Norgoma. Councillor Myers stated at the time that, quote, "tourism was on the rebound", and also, quote, "this was not the year to pull the plug". Again, I suggest we will likely hear similar arguments tonight from those opposing mine in councillor Nero's motion. This, despite the fact that in 2013, the Norgoma had, according to the EDC, failed to develop a long-term strategic plan for the site and produced only minimal tourist benefits. A report to council at the time said, quote, "there was no reason to believe that the visitation M revenue will increase". Further, a five-year funding agreement for the Norgoma that had been established in 2007 continued up to that point, which was seven years later. The following year, in 2014, the matter was again before the previous council with councillors being asked to extend the five-year funding agreement for one more year, which extended the five-year funding agreement to an eight-year funding agreement. Council was again told of the wishes to have the board inject fundraising efforts to help the ship. Other options were being explored, council was told. They had found someone willing to operate a restaurant in the ship, council was told. Councillor Myers was quoted at the time as saying that she, quote, "implored council not to pull the funding for the Norgoma". Council was also told at the time by city staff that, quote, "the one more chance scenario has been given to the ship many times over". Councillor Bruny at the time said that he didn't see anything that offered a long-term solution for the Norgoma. Councillor Nero at the time said that he favored cleaning up the site and preparing it for a future use. That's in 2014. Nevertheless, funding was extended that year. So here we are in 2017, five terms of council later and 15 years after the matter was first brought before council, with the same message going to be given to us tonight, that the Norgoma will reinvent itself, that it will become a major tourist attraction, that we're turning a corner if only we could give it another chance. I say to council that it ain't going to happen. We have been giving the Norgoma a chance and a second chance and a third chance and a fourth chance for many years. The community interest isn't, simply isn't there. The Bondar Marina is our transient tourist marina. That means that when tourists come to our city, this is where they stop. And what do they see? They see a ship with paint falling off. They check TripAdvisor. And unfortunately, they see negative review after negative review. It's not the impression we want to give to folks coming to our city. Council has provided a lifeline for the Norgoma for 17 years. We cannot continue to do so with the hope that magically, folks will start flocking to the ship in droves, something that hasn't happened in the 42 years the ship has been on our waterfront. Nobody would like it more than me for this ship to be a huge draw for the city. It simply isn't. Let's do the responsible thing that should have happened 17 years ago and look at all the options for the ship, either moving it or getting rid of it. Let's not ask for more reports whose conclusions will be predetermined. We can make our Bondar Marina into something great. And we could look at ideas to reinvent it and make it a Rideau Canal-like outdoor skating rink or reinstalling the section of boardwalk that has been missing from it for at least six or seven years. We can breathe new life into our tourist marina. But we cannot do so if we continue to support a ship that detracts from our city's beauty. Let's not be the council that kicks this decision down the road for another term. Let's take the actions necessary to support the tourism industry in our city and look at all options for removing the Norgoma.
Any other councillors that want to speak either for or against the motion? Councillor Myers, do you have questions? Go ahead.
My first question is to the city solicitor, through you, Mr. Mayor. Nula, can you tell us who's the legal owner of the Norgoma? Okay, sorry, the vessel is owned and operated by the St. Mary's River Marine Centre. It's a charitable nonprofit corporation that's focused on the restoration of the ship. My next question is to the mover and the seconder. Have either of you met with the owners of the vessel to advise them of your desire to move the ship? No. My next question is to the mover and seconder of the resolution. Why do you want it moved from its present location? No, I'd like to hear, why do you want it moved from its present location?
I definitely laid that out.
I'd like to hear you say, why do you want it moved from its present location? But third time, you're a bright fellow. Can you just give me a couple of comments about why you want it moved?
Councillor Myers, in fairness, I really think he laid that out.
No, I don't think he did. He talked about a whole pile of other things. He didn't say why he wanted it moved from its present location.
I can, I can...
And I'd be happy to answer that question too because I started, in some ways, started this by my comments a few weeks ago.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, my question is not to you. Through you, to the mover.
The Bondar Marina is our transient tourist marina. That means when tourists come to our city by boat, this is where they stop.
Mr. Shoemaker, with all due respect, can you not answer without reading?
You've asked me a question, and I'm responding to that question, councillor Myers.
You know what, Mr. Mayor, I'll move on. I'll move on. Forget it. I'll move on.
Councillor Myers, one second, please. You did ask him a question, he was answering it. So we can move on from it, but he was answering your question.
He's reading a speech again, Mr. Mayor. I just want him to answer a question. Why do you want it moved?
I was giving you that answer.
I think he was in fairness, he gave you that answer.
I will move on. My next question is to Mr. Vare. Oh, sorry, seconder, did you want to answer that? Please, I'd love to hear from you.
Did you want to?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My position has not changed from all the previous times that we've talked about the Norgoma. Councillor Shoemaker mentioned that the marina should be reinvented, quote, the word "reinvented". I always believed that the Norgoma is a good thing for the city. It's just in the wrong place. It's not being maintained properly for the location that it's in. And that's, that position that I am taking tonight is no different than any other time that we have dealt and that I have dealt being on this council. And I couldn't confirm this because I didn't go back that far in time. But I'm pretty sure I wasn't, I wasn't on council from 2000 to 2010. But prior to that, if I'm not mistaken, we had talked about relocating the Norgoma before 2000. And I was involved in those discussions. And my position had been the same then. So in answer to your question, in, just in a summary, I just do not believe, I do not believe that that location is best suited for that ship in this city there. That marina, we could do a lot of work in that marina to showcase it in a better way.
Thank you, Mr. Nero. Question to Mr. Vare, the Deputy CEO for Community Services. Is there a demand for more slip space in the Roberta Bondar Marina?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Myers. We have accommodated some non-transient boats in the marina due to demand for regular space. There is still some space available within the Bondar Marina for transient boats.
Yeah, I mean, I travel by it. I'm sure most of us do. Everybody seems to travel by and notice chip paint on the Norgoma. I think they also notice an empty marina for most of the season, except when the American Pro boats were here. The Pro-Am was here. And I understand for a boat owner who's a user in the marina, a 32-foot boat owner, user in the marina, that there's no more than two addition... user in the marina, that there's no more than two additional slips that would be gained by removing the Norgoma. Mr. Vare, another question to you. The resolution refers to an outdoor skating facility. Is there a demand for additional outdoor skating facility in Sault Ste. Marie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Myers. We haven't conducted a survey related to demand for outdoor skating facilities. We would have to look into that. We are getting the ice utilization study done, and I think the intent of the motion, if I'm not correct, was for staff to come back and report on that feasibility and the likelihood of that being an attraction downtown.
Yes, and also, as part of that, would there be any revenue attached providing a new outdoor skating facility to offset the expenses to create what's obviously a high-risk skating on the St. Mary's River, and would require some safety measures? Would that be part of your report to identify all costs involved in creating such a facility?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Myers. That would be a consideration. We have had some discussions internally at staff related to the motion, what would be required for a facility of that type.
Okay, and I have a question to our city solicitor that she's aware of. Would our insurer be accepting the city of Sault Ste. Marie using the St. Mary's River Harbour for ice skating when they've forbidden climbing on a train at Bellevue Park?
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Myers. That falls under our property insurance. We would get some advice on it, and there'd be some conditions, but we'd be allowed to do it.
Yeah, I think that, as you know, I think you were copied on my correspondence with Mr. Shear, the risk management officer, sorry, thank you, Mr. Butland, on your staff, and he said in this, "As to managing the risk, we'd want to ensure proper access to and from the ice stairs, railings, adequate lighting, some sort of fencing. Most important would be establishing protocols to ensure that the ice itself is safe." Obviously, a fair amount of cost involved there. And anyone who works in City Hall knows what it's like on the water down here in the winter, but anyway. Looking in the resolution and what's being asked for, Mr. Vare, question to you. Can you produce this report in-house, or will you be spending money to hire outside expertise?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Myers. Our intent was to respond to that report in-house.
Okay, because there's a number of, obviously, pieces to this resolution to fulfill the report, and I, for one, obviously, as has been well documented by the mover, am consistent in my position, and I have said repeatedly that the cost of removing the ship is only one small part. You've got massive costs attached to what you might want to do there, and that wasn't even looking at ice skating facilities and reconfiguring the marina. So I'm gonna like to see a needs analysis as part of this report around outdoor skating, as well as additional use of the marina. So that's it on my questions. Mr. Mayor, do you want my comments now?
Absolutely.
I'd like to remind council that the Norgoma is not owned by the city of Sault Ste. Marie. It was sold in 1981. I have the agreement right here in front of me. The city of Sault Ste. Marie acquired the vessel in 1975 for $1. In six years, they found they were not capable of running a tourist attraction, the city of Sault Ste. Marie. So the councils before us, in their wisdom, looked within the community to do something with this artifact that they had acquired. The St. Mary's River Marine Centre was formed as a nonprofit corporation at that time. The absolute sheer naivety, well-intentioned, short-sightedness of that dear group at that time in not asking and committing the city in this agreement to fund them manually is only a testament, in talking to men like Gord Smedley, who've been involved with it for 41 years, the honor and the ethics that they fought existed at the city council table. They were under the understanding that there would be support, encouragement, help, as the years went by, much to their folly. It was left on the shoulders of volunteers with no assistance whatsoever. And the Roberta Bondar Transient Marina, when built, was custom-built for the Norgoma. The hundreds of thousands of dollars spent, taxpayers' dollars, with the full endorsement of city councils before us, was to customize the pier to fit the Norgoma, to fit their sewage outpour. It's a custom outlet that's there. You can't just wave a wand and move it to somewhere else and have that same facility. It was built for it, with the councils before us' vision of a Norgoma marine park to tell the story of our marine history. There's a plaque that was put there in 2011, if you go down and read it, that talks to that. I ask members of council to think about why I would be so committed to keeping the Norgoma on our waterfront. Would it not be easier for me just to go along with everybody else, with the mayor, with city councillors, who feel you should just get rid of it? No offense to any of you, I am a tourism specialist. It is my career. I know what I'm talking about. In a city the size of Sault Ste. Marie, we need attractions, large and small. You can talk to the CEO of the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund Corporation, Mr. Bruce Strapp, who with me for 14 years continually did try to convince city council, the former administration, of the value of a small tourist attraction in this community. Folks, get your head out of the sand. We're not a CN Tower Toronto tourist attraction. We have an Agua Canyon Tour Train that hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent on because it's important. So are the secondary attractions. You don't see lineups going into the art gallery, but do you doubt the value? You gave them an extra $100,000 bucks last year in the blink of an eye, which I totally supported, and do. You don't see lineups going into the Bush Plain Museum, except on certain days when they're doing the Bush Plain Days and so on, but we all know the value and the heritage. You can't question it. But somehow or other, the effort that's been put into sinking this ship versus in some way trying to invest in it and support it, and you could have a restaurant there, Mr. Shoemaker, had the city councils of the day directed staff to invest one-tenth of what you're going to expect to get back in a report of the hundreds of thousands of dollars that it will not only take to remove it, but to restore the very area, or to add other facilities that you're talking about, like skating on our downtown waterfront that is bitterly cold for many of the days of a skating season, unless you build a wall. I've heard that before. Clearly, everyone can see this value, as I mentioned, in the tour train. There were 3,700 visitors at the Norgoma this season, which is up 15% from 3,203 previous years. Yes, tourism is on the upswing. They have a short 12-week season. They're not operating year-round, like the Bush Plain or the Art Gallery, and they hired four summer students. Visitors from all kinds of places have been at the Norgoma, and I don't know what reviews you were reading, but I pulled one off of TripAdvisor from Georgetown, Texas, August 26, 2017. Interesting museum, has potential after renovations. No question, there's nobody more than this man sitting in the gallery who would tell you, yes, it needs more renovations, yes, it needs more refurbishing. God bless you, why don't you get out and help them, instead of putting the energy into sinking them? This man with his son said, "We made a quick stop in Sault Ste. Marie, found this museum, and only cost a few dollars, so we popped in. The ship does need some TLC. The ship has some damage from sitting in the elements for years. However, the potential for this to become a great museum is there. The renovations are underway, and what has been done so far is great. Love listening to the seven stations that are set up throughout the ship, that give you an overview of each section. Regardless of the construction, a number of the areas are easily accessible, there's plenty to see. My boys enjoyed it. We got a quick peek into some very interesting history, August 26 of this year." Mr. Mayor, I will conclude. As we all know, 2017 is Canada's 150. It's been a year of celebrating our heritage. Norgoma is the only place in Sault Canada where the story of marine transportation on the Great Lakes is being told. In Sault Ste. Marie, Michigan, it is being told on the Valley Camp, which is a museum ship, by the way. I spoke to them today. They get 20,000 visitors a year, and they're opened from early May through to October 21st. In Sault Ste. Marie, Michigan, it's being told, and it's being supported, and it's being invested in. It's been there for 50 years, and it's been supported for 50 years. Why have we missed the boat, literally, by ignoring our marine heritage storytelling, and in fact, trying to get rid of it? As I look at what is being asked for in this resolution, a few thoughts come to my mind. A report was requested in 2013, as mentioned, and STEM engineering was hired to write that report. That's why I asked the question earlier. How much money was spent on that? Too bad some of that money hadn't been invested in the Norgoma. What I will be looking for in this report back is very, very thorough information. Based on the old report, we already know the costs will well exceed $300,000 just for removal, because that report's four years old. I want to see the full extent of costs to potentially remove the vessel, costs of restoring the marina, and these other things that have been asked for. The existing docks have to be removed prior to the ship being able to be moved. I'm confident that when it's all in, we will be pushing half a million dollars of city taxpayers' funds to remove a viable, small, niche marine heritage attraction that if given one-tenth of the money, and this council could have the vision to invest in culture, and Mr. Mayor, I won't even go to your address that you gave a week ago tonight about the value of cultural vitality in this community and its economy. I won't even go there.
You just did.
But you did, to 63 people. No, I was gonna quote you, but I won't. One point to note, three weeks ago, I met with Mr. Jack Purvis and Sheila Purvis, who's General Manager, Purvis Marine. No one would argue that these are the most knowledgeable people about the Sault waterfront. In that conversation, I was reminded that while it's true the water levels are at their highest, that in some time, the Norgoma is sitting in a bowl. It's in a hole, if you like, and it is not a case of simply tie up a tug and let's haul her out of there. They are quite confident it will require dredging. So, it is not an opportune time just because the water level is high and you won't have dredging. You will have dredging. Therefore, I'll be looking at all costs associated with this report, and that's it.
Does anybody else want to speak to it? Councillor Hollingsworth and Councillor Grandinetti.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I won't spend a lot of time, there were just comments, but well done, well done, councillor Myers. I think every point you emphasized is a point that we all need to hear, not just on this table, but throughout our community. I want to congratulate you on doing such thorough research and using this opportunity to educate all of us. I think it's not just your passion, but you are a dedicated councilperson and want to make sure that when the day comes, if the day comes, we make a decision on this, that we're going to make the right decision based on the right information. And I do want to make one additional comment. When we did have that chance to speak with the Norgoma board, they did bring to our attention that they do and are pursuing new members on the board, and they have some young people on the board now, which is fantastic. Young people in their late 20s, early 30s, which have some great ideas. Second thing, they went out on their own and raised money to, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, build new washrooms. So they are working very hard in updating, sprucing up, the Norgoma. But again, to your point, councillor Myers, the history of that ship also basically reinforces that us, Northern Ontario, a lot of our immigrants came to Northern Ontario not by car, not by roads, but by the Great Lakes. And so, well done. Thank you for taking the time and speaking to us.
Councillor Grandinetti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question to Mr. Vare. Have you had anyone express any interest in doing anything with the Norgoma?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Grandinetti. Yes, since the news coverage has come out on the Norgoma, we were approached by a gentleman in Chicago. He has expressed interest in the Norgoma and suggested that he would be willing to pay the costs to remove and tug the boat down to Chicago and have it restored there.
That hasn't been fleshed out at all, councillor Grandinetti, because obviously, this was before council, so that interest was expressed to the city, but it hasn't followed up on it in any way, shape or form.
Thank you.
So we have councillor Bruny, and then councillor Nero, and then councillor Butland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I must say, two excellent speeches, one for and one against tonight. My recommendation is to come back, I would like to know what is the cost to move the ship. It's been on the radar for all these years. Council or staff came back one year and said it was gonna be $100,000, which I find that hard to believe, and that was four years ago. I will agree with councillor Myers that the cost will be huge to move this. I would like to see the report come back, but also, I don't think we should be looking at if a skating rink, and if councillor Shoemaker can agree with it, a skating rink there with the water level and the water movement, you would not get a, you would get a frozen ice surface, but water underneath would be constant movement, which could be danger to anybody because the ice will crack. And this is from an expert that explained to me regarding this. So, if they can remove that, I would be more than happy to support this resolution. If not, because what's happening is, we're telling our staff to come back, reports after reports after reports. Let's provide a simple resolution here. Let's eliminate the bottom part. Let's find out what the actual cost is, and also, is there another location for this boat?
Councillor Shoemaker, is it, councillor Nero, is it friendly to delete that last further? Because, I mean, we are kind of mixing two issues here, right? So, I would agree with councillor Bruny in that respect. It's just the last paragraph. So, the mover and secondary are agreeable to that, so the motion before us will end at the second item that the councils are looking for, and will delete the last paragraph starting with "further that staff", that will be deleted.
Thanks.
Okay, so I have councillor Nero, then councillor Butland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't have much to add, but I wanted, just for clarification, after councillor Myers' comments, we need to be careful when the report comes back, not to mix the work that has to be done on the marina, irregardless if the ship was moved or not. There's a substantial amount of work, in my view, and I think staff has already alluded to that, that has to be done to the docks in that marina. So, when we look at it, you know, let's not mix that all together with the costs of moving the ship. We need to make sure that we are able to separate it.
I understand. Okay, councillor Butland.
Yes. My question to the mover and secondary of both resolutions, are these resolutions mutually exclusive, or can they go forward together or not?
Well, they're independent resolutions.
Yes, I know, but...
How would you see them going forward together?
I'm asking...
I don't see a way that we can get them both. I think that one of them necessarily almost contradicts the other, so I see it as an either-or.
I've got it. Fair game. Okay, the abandoned ship kind of threw me there, but I don't think I've changed all that much. It's been 17 years, I'm told, and first of all, congratulations to both parties. This is the kind of debate that's exceptional. I think people would be happy to see it. But I just caution all of us, let's not get too personal with one another, and it became that, and it made everybody uneasy, but congratulations for the content and the passion to which you brought to the floor, to this chambers. So, I have to say that councillor Myers, impassioned plea, a whole host of things there that I don't think I gave a thought, but after 17 years, and I was here for the restaurant, and some kind of restaurant took place on that boat, and it was not successful. It was put forward that we should sink the boat somewhere out in the river for divers, and that would have been a good thing. That didn't come to fruition, obviously. Melted down for scrap. Somebody said, "There's a lot of money in that, we could do that." Float... Float it to Manitouland Island. That would be a better location, Counselor Nero. And I think Counselor Myers was talking about another, well, at one time, the Purvis area. So all of these come forward and you say, oh, boy, but again, how much, yeah, it's going to cost a whole lot of money to move it. And the question was asked, are we allowed to move it if it's not our ship? But number two, if we do keep it in its present position, it will require also a whole lot of money to make it more attractive to people. So as much as I say, after 17 years, I don't think I want to go back and forth on the boat here, so I'm going to stick with, it's time to make it move. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very good presentations. I appreciate that. Gave me lots to think about. The one thing I would say, and you know, we do as a council need to make a decision one way or another. It just seems to me that when we were funding it before, it was like, okay, we'll give you some money, leave us alone. And we really do need to make a decision one way or another with this thing. If the report comes back and we can come up with a plan that shows what the marina would look like post-Norgoma, it has to be something that celebrates our marine history. We can't simply abandon that, I understand that. But we need to have a plan. We just, I don't agree that we just pull this thing out. If we decide to keep it, we need to get serious about making it successful because it's just sitting there and we're not supporting it. All I'm saying is I'd like to get a report, make a definitive decision and move forward either way, because I'm getting tired of dealing with this issue, to be honest with you. One way or another, we need to do something with it. If there are people out there that actually want to do something, we need to support them, not just give them a few thousand dollars and ask them to go away for a while. If we decide to move it, we need to have a plan to move the city forward, not just the issue with the Norgoma, but the whole thing. If we're going to move it, we've got to use that as an opportunity to do something with that area. Thank you.
Counsel Fatah.
The point that Counselor Butler made about the two resolutions moving forward, that may be something that we may have to consider because the fact that we voted on this a while back, could have been the last time, second last time, I seem to remember that the figure to move it was somewhere in the order of a million dollars and I think that played, I seem to remember a million, up to a million dollars is what I remember and that was a large contributor to the fact that we said, leave it there. So the decision to leave it there wasn't based on the fact that we, as Counselor Myers is hoping that we actually make some positive steps into doing something with this thing other than leaving it there in its present state. We've paid, we've given them $15,000 a year for an endless amount of time and it still sits there in a state where it's never going to be realistically a decent worthwhile tourist So the fact that we're going to have the report to tell us what it will cost to remove it is certainly vital to me because if we do hear a figure coming close to a million dollars and some of us might be swayed to say, as one local businessman told me one time not too long ago when I asked him, what do you think about it? And possibly costing up to a million dollars, he says, leave it there. And that was coming from a well-established business person who certainly wouldn't be saying that lightly. If what Mr. Vare has said about a potential buyer, that's something that has to come into this conversation for me personally. If that is, if there's any truth to that where there's something that may actually come from that, then I think we have to know that because that's going to play a big part in terms of making my decision even easier in terms of removing it. There were two very good speeches, I'm telling you right now. It is difficult for us. I mean, 3,700 visitors, 20,000 in Sioux St. Marie, Michigan, but a lot of those people that go to Sioux St. Marie, Michigan don't cross the international bridge. We can talk about tourism all we want, but Sioux St. Marie, Michigan gets about 5% of what Mackinac gets and we get a very small fraction of what goes to Sioux St. Marie, Michigan. I was there a few times during the summer and that area downtown is constantly busy. I'm looking at the plates, they're from all over the, all over the US. Those visitors that are crossing, that are going to Sioux St. Marie, Michigan, those 20,000 visitors that are going to Sioux St. Marie, Michigan to visit their boat are not crossing over the international bridge and they probably never will. This is difficult, but I really, I'm really curious whether the two resolutions can proceed or is there any point to that? I mean, we're going to be voting on this one right now.
You're voting on this one. So this one carries, it proceeds, and then you're going to vote on the next one and if the next one carries, it proceeds.
Yeah. But I certainly hope that in the report that we will hear the details of the costs. And I don't know where anybody might draw the line, the saying, if the figure is somewhere around a million dollars, if that's going to sway anybody, I don't...
That's a debate, Counsel Fatah, for another day. Like, let's just focus on what's in front of us right now. Are you in favor of the motion or not? That's what this debate's about.
I understand, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
So I'll sum up this and then we can move on and I'm going to answer the question, Counsel Myers, because, that you posed to Counsel Shoemaker, because I raised this issue a number of months back. First, I want to begin by recognizing the good folks who do and have volunteered on this board for a lot of years. And Counsel Myers is right. There's a long history here of the city not really being in on this, you know, like there wasn't a tremendous amount of support from the city. And for a lot of years, the group of volunteers kept that operation alive. And you don't want to recognize the effort they made. Part of the reason why I believe it should be moved is because of that history, is because of the fact that we have not invested in this. And to invest in this now, I understand, take considerable amount of money. But there's a different reason and it's a larger reason, is that we have one transient marina and we hear a lot about, you know, how we should have tourism and how the downtown should be more active. Our transient marina isn't that attractive. And one of the reasons why our transient marina is not that attractive, it's because of that big boat sitting in it. That boat is shedding paint into the marina. It takes up a large part of the marina. It's an old marina that we have to invest in. When you come, turn around our city hall, see our city hall, you see that boat. That boat casts a shadow on the Roberta Bondar Pavilion. When you come downtown, you see that boat and it doesn't look nice. To me, it is because of its state and this is no fault to the good people that are volunteering and trying to keep it up because you need resources to keep something up. Look at the McMecon Arena. But because of its state, it to me has become a symbol of decay. It is not a good symbol in our downtown core. I believe we need to revitalize our downtown core. I believe our one transient marina has to be a lot more attractive than it is for tourism purposes. And I believe that if we're not going to get in on this thing and support it and invest it, then we either have to make a definitive decision to move away from it or not. Now, we don't own the boat, but we do own the marina and we do control what activity happens in that marina. And the agreement that we have allows for us to say, you don't get to keep it there in perpetuity. It's been there for a long time. As has been very ably pointed out tonight by both Counsel Shoemaker and Counsel Myers, we've been at this for a long time. We haven't made the proper go of it. And I think it's in the city's best interest that it move. Now, the reality is, culture is important, but we can't be all things to all people. Are we making a play on aviation? Are we going to focus on our aviation? Are we making a play in our marine history? Like, one of the things that I've heard time and again from all of our cultural boards and all of our culture institutions, that they're all underfunded and we have to do more. I agree, we have to do more, but we won't be able to do everything for everybody. We're going to have to pick some things and focus on those things and become really good at them and invest in them. So it's not going to be that we're going to be successful in all of these different endeavors, but we have to make sure we pick some endeavors and make sure we're really successful at them. And I don't see this boat as one of them. I don't see this boat as a significant part of our history. Now, I know it's a significant part of the Great Lakes marine history and I don't dispute that, but this boat, this ship, shipboat, the reality is, I don't believe that there's a strong proposition for it moving forward. I think if there was going to be success, we would have already, over the last 20 years, found that success. So that's why I support the motion. I believe that we should look at this and we should consider it and it will be back before us and when the report comes back, we'll have a debate then about whether it should or shouldn't move. But I agree with Counsel Christian's comments, either we get on with it one way or the other. But the way we're doing it now, we're not doing it right and that's what we've got to stop. So recorded vote. Madam Clerk, for a recorded vote, please.
Counselor Fatah.
Four.
Counselor Christian.
Four.
Counselor Kupodich.
Four.
Counselor Hoopanen.
Four.
Counselor Hollingsworth.
Opposed.
Counselor Grandinetti.
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker.
Four.
Counselor Nero.
Four.
Counselor Bruni.
Four.
Counselor Myers.
Against.
Counselor Butler.
Four.
Mayor Provenzano.
Four.
Motion passes.
Okay, so that brings us to the next Norgoma motion on our agenda. Counsel Myers, would you like to speak to that? Oh, sorry, we'll have the clerk read it first.
It's a motion by Counselors Myers and Hollingsworth, whereas the city of Sioux St. Marie has two well-established advisory bodies of city council, each of which was created to advise city council on matters pertaining to culture and heritage and whose members are community volunteers appointed by city council based on their expertise in culture and heritage. And said bodies, as stated on the city's website, are the Cultural Advisory Board as a board of council whose primary purpose is to advise on all matters concerning the cultural life of the community and the implementation of the cultural policy for the corporation of the city of Sioux St. Marie. The Municipal Heritage Committee, the Sioux St. Marie Municipal Heritage Committee, advises city council on matters relating to Part IV, Conservation of Buildings of Cultural Heritage Value or Interest. And whereas the cultural policy indicates that a cultural advisory board be formed to advise, assist and make recommendations to council on cultural matters. And whereas Section 1.2 of the Cultural Policy, definition of culture, includes a heritage arts component which speaks to heritage conservation, identification, protection and interpretation of one intangible heritage, dance, music, song, story, et cetera; two, immovable heritage, buildings, cultural heritage, landscapes, natural heritage, archaeological and traditional use sites; three, movable property, personal property, art, artifacts, documents, natural objects and specimens. And whereas the MS Norgoma is a museum ship, an artifact referenced in the aforementioned Section 3 and meeting the Merriam-Webster definition of an artifact being an object remaining from a particular period. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cultural Advisory Board and Municipal Heritage Committee be requested to provide city council with a report providing an opinion as to the cultural and heritage value of the MS Norgoma to the community in its present state. And further be it resolved that such an opinion be viewed as advice only, provided to council for consideration as to present and future value of the MS Norgoma within the context of community culture and heritage.
Okay. Counsel Myers, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, obviously, the issue at hand here, and I'm surprised that, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership because I'm surprised by councillors who would think one was mutually exclusive from the other. We have council-appointed boards and committees that are advisory boards and committees. And it has come up in the past and some of the councillors around this table who have been here for a few years know that they have been offended more than once because they are established as advisory committees and they've never been asked for their advice. And having sat on some of them, as have other members around this table, that is their role and function, is that when we are dealing with issues that are of great import and that are of great impact in our community, you ask them for their advice and their input. So that is what I'm doing. This council did approve, not this particular group right now, but this council did approve a cultural policy. And we have a policy. Do we follow it? Do we not? So part of that policy is to look at our artifacts and get some sort of enlightened opinion as to their value and application in today's community. I've said many times, and so have others around the table, that there's value in our marine heritage. Maybe there isn't. Maybe I have my head in the clouds. Maybe I'm wrong. I'd like to hear from the experts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else? Counsel Shoemaker, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see, and perhaps one of the staff members could advise me if I'm wrong, but I don't see how the Municipal Heritage Committee could comment on this, given that their mandate is the conservation of buildings of cultural heritage value or interest. This is clearly not a building, I would suggest.
Are you comfortable coming in that, Deputy CEO Vare?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to refer this question to Virginia MacLeod, who's here.
If I saw her to my right, I wouldn't have looked at you. Ms. MacLeod, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker. The committee would be, the property itself cannot be designated because it is not a building, but they may be able to provide some comment on the historical value because there is the connection to the plaque. But again, it is not a designated property, so...
The boat is not.
Yeah, the ship is not a designated property, so it would not be able to, from that standpoint, they wouldn't be able to provide any guidance on how to deal with it because it is not designated.
So I think Counsel Shoemaker's asking you, is this within their jurisdiction or not?
It would be kind of a fine line, I think, if it would be addressed through that, through the policy, because again, they would be advising, generally they'd advise on properties either that are of interest or that are designated. And since this could be, doesn't fall under either of those two...
This is not a designated property.
Correct.
It's right here. That's why I put it in here. The municipal heritage follows the cultural policy. And Point 3 refers to movable property, including artifacts, and that's why it's in there. I thoroughly researched this and I spoke to the Chair of the Municipal Heritage Committee. And yes, we're not talking about a designated property here, not at all. We're asking for an opinion about the value of the heritage. They are the Municipal Heritage Committee. The Chair is quite comfortable with that. And it's in the definition, it's right in front of us. It's why it's in the resolution.
Okay, so does that, does that address your question, Counsel Shoemaker?
Not really.
Well, then don't vote for it.
I understand, Counsel Myers, but I'll ask my question just as you had the opportunity to do so. The Municipal Heritage Committee, as it says directly in this motion, which Counsel Myers drafted, is the conservation of buildings of cultural heritage, heritage value or interest. So I don't see how it possibly fits within their mandate. Now...
And whereas?
Yes, you could go into the cultural policy, which is a completely different document. Thank you. And I would appreciate not being interrupted, given that I didn't interrupt you on multiple occasions. That being said, regardless of whether the Municipal Heritage Committee is asked to report or not, I would ask that if this is going to be passed, that they be given a timeline within which to report, because I don't want a report to come back from staff and we're waiting several months beyond that for a report for the cultural advisory, from the Cultural Advisory Board or the Municipal Heritage Committee. So I would ask that if this is going to go forward, I'd be happy to move an amendment if that's the necessary route we have to go, but I would ask that they report, you know, at the same time or earlier than staff's report because I don't want this to drag out.
Well, let me ask Ms. MacLeod, Ms. MacLeod, you deal with both of these groups in your role here at the city. Would it be reasonable to ask them to report back in the same timeframe that staff would report back?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker. Depending on the timeframe, we would have to obviously have a meeting to discuss the issue and then provide those reports, but at the same time be doing the research for the other motion as well.
So would you be, is it fair to say, Counsel Shoemaker, you want to see them make their best efforts to report back in the same timeline? Is that, are you comfortable with that, Counsel Myers?
Yes, 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 Mr. Mayor, yes.
Okay, so the motion would be amended to ask that the committees, if it goes forward, make their best efforts to report back to city council at the same time that senior city staff reports back on the large question. Anything else, anybody else on this motion? Counsel Shoemaker, you're done. So we'll call a vote in the motion, all in favor of the motion. Motion's carried. So 8.5 works on arterial roads, the clerk is typing and I was going to read that for you, Madam Clerk, but you can go ahead and read it. I'm going to ask Counsel Fatah to take the chair, please. Just need to take a minute.
Motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Christian, whereas morning office rush hour times are between 8:00 AM and 9:30 AM on city streets and whereas evening office rush hour times are between 4:30 PM and 6:00 PM on city streets. And whereas any impeding of traffic at these times amplifies congestion on city streets. And whereas arterial roads are used by most residents to arrive to and from any destination in the city at all hours of the day, but in higher volumes during the morning and evening rush hours. And whereas in recent months, both line painting and resurfacing have been undertaken on these arterial roads during the morning and evening rush hours, amplifying traffic congestion. Now therefore be it resolved that staff report back on the feasibility of ensuring any future city contracts awarded for construction works on arterial
city contracts awarded for construction works on arterial roads specify that to the greatest degree possible, traffic not be impeded during the morning or evening rush hours set out herein, as long as the restrictions have no more than a minimal impact on the overall cost of the roadworks.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a staff member that would be speaking to this, or would be? Okay. Council Shoemaker, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. This really only applies to arterial roads, so we're talking, you know, a handful of roads in the city right now. Two sections of second line are being done, that's what prompted this resolution. It was, you know, after work one day, quarter after five, and they were resurfacing part of second line. So it seemed a highly inconvenient time to be resurfacing second line between Great Northern Road and Old Garden River Road. So, you know, if that work could have been done an hour later, it would have, I think, certainly been a lot more efficient for traffic flow, probably safer for the people working. And then on another occasion, I saw them, you know, doing line painting around 8:00 in the morning. So, again, traffic is, traffic flow is certainly heavier at those times. I'm not, you know, we're not Toronto where we experience significant rush hours, but I think it would be in the best interests of both worker safety and traffic flow to see if, you know, if there's not an additional cost, or if there's a negligible additional cost, if these restrictions can be set out so that when works being undertaken on roads like Second Line or Great Northern Road or Trunk Road, that it not be done at those peak hours, to the greatest degree possible.
Council Christian, go ahead.
I was interested in this resolution. When Council Shoemaker brought this forward, I had obvious concerns, because I understand cost overruns, et cetera. But what interests me with this is that, you know, we at least, without dismissing it out of turn like we tend to do when we, when we don't think it'll make sense, just have a dialogue with contractors and with people to do this type of work to see if there's any alternatives. I remember the road construction on Great Northern Road, and the thing that got my attention with this is that it's not only the inconvenience of the people driving the roads, it's the inconvenience to the businesses that are open, that you can't access, et cetera. So, I'm simply saying, we need to take a more creative look at perhaps looking at alternative times. I don't know if we pay shift premiums because we have to start people later or earlier, but there is a premium to pay when we're doing road construction on major roads, and you can't access businesses in Sault Ste. Marie. So I'm not sure if we can realistically move forward with this. I'm simply asking that we look at it as a way, a means of having a dialogue, a conversation, a way of looking at doing it differently, that's all. I'm not expecting them to come back and say, we can do it, and it's going to cost 25% more. I won't support that. But I'm just asking that we have a dialogue to see if there's some alternatives out there, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I guess my question to the mover and the seconder on this is, did you speak to Mr. Girardi? I think we all understand that if there's a project going on, how can you ask the construction workers from 8:00 to 9:30 in the morning, please take a break? No? I didn't interrupt you when you spoke, Mr. Christian. Okay. But I think if the mover and the seconder just ask Mr. Girardi, is this possible? Why do we need a report on this? I don't understand it, and all due respect to the mover and the seconder. To ask construction to halt between 8:00 and 9:30 on the main roads, and then 4:30 to 6:00 p.m., I just can't see this occurring without an expense, a huge expense. But, and I'll just leave it at that. And maybe Mr. Girardi can comment on it.
Mr. Girardi, would you like to comment on that at this point?
Will there be an additional cost?
Through you, Acting Mayor, to Council Bruni, certainly anything can be looked at. My response, if you're asking me right now, was we can look at it. Is there a cost when you're looking at delays in a community that has limited amount of time to get construction work done? Weather conditions being what they are, we had quite a wet summer. I would say I want to take advantage of every hour and every minute that we have. We always ask contractors to be aware of the times that they're working, especially our own staff. I can control that a little better, of course. And we make sure that we try and work around what we consider in Sault Ste. Marie to be a rush hour. I was just in Toronto on the weekend, so I've experienced some rush hours. But we do appreciate that you're bringing a point up, and we do appreciate that it's maybe something that you have a concern about. I think that, like you said, the approach that I might take is, we pass that on to the contractor to say, look, just be aware of this. Be aware of what times that we are, that we have the highest amount of traffic, but consider to, considering that, also be aware of the short amount of construction season that we do have here. We're running jobs that normal contracts will run and be done by the end of October or later. We have to run November, sometimes December, because we can't get them done, so.
Just a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
I do agree with Councilor Shoemaker. I too got caught on second line. But for Mr. Girardi, is, are the police notified when there's a major construction job going on? Are they directing traffic, or does that have to come from the contractor itself?
Through Acting Mayor to Council Bruni, if we feel it's in an area that may need some assistance, so be it. But we run Book VII. If we follow Book VII and set up our traffic plans properly, traffic should be able to move through a construction site without any issue. Certainly, it's going to slow it down when you're operating normally at two lanes and you're cutting down to one. But we still operate, and as far as our workers, we appreciate your concern for our workers, because certainly we have that concern. But that's why we have these safety measures put in place, like following certain guidelines on how we set up a traffic control.
So the answer is no, police services?
Not unless we specifically need them, say, there's an event or something else going on, we wouldn't normally call them out during a construction project.
Because it was on a Friday, and it was at the time Council Shoemaker mentioned, at 5:00, 5:30. The resident did call the police services, and police service said, we were not directed by the city or by the contractor to direct traffic. And I'm just saying, at that particular time, on a Friday, everybody's in a rush to get home, why wouldn't we provide some type of service for that?
Through you, Acting Mayor, to Council Bruni, there is traffic lights. If we follow the traffic lights, and certainly traffic will back up, but it should still slowly progress through, just like any traffic jam.
Fine.
Council Butland?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a non-starter, as far as I'm concerned. It's, we're looking at three hours a day for a time period. Yes, it is an inconvenience to people and business, but it's of short duration, and I don't think there's any doubt that this would add time to the end of the job. I don't think there's any doubt that this will add cost to the job. So, and that's why I think it's a non-starter. Thank you.
Council Shoemaker?
Well, okay, thanks. I'd asked, just, I had been asked a question, so I had raised my hand to respond to it. But I did ask Commissioner Elliott about this, as this is really engineer-type products, projects, sorry, that would be affected by this. And, you know, his response was, I guess generally what we're hearing here tonight was, we can ask for anything. So, you know, we could put anything we want in a contract, it just might make the costs go up. So that's why I'm saying, let's look at these things. But there does seem to be a bit of a misconception, which is, I'm not asking them not to do work during these hours. I'm just asking them not to do either a resurfacing or a line painting that would really impede traffic. There is other accessory-type work that can be done during these times. It's not that all the work being done on these days between these hours has to stop. So I just wanted to clear up that misconception.
Thank you. Council Kompadich?
Through you, Acting Mayor Fata. So, working, worker safety was brought up, and I'm just curious to know, and everybody knows how critical it is, because it's most important, but I'm just curious to know, when was the last time there was an injury of a worker during these peak times? And I guess I have to request Larry Girardi to answer that question.
Through Acting Mayor to Council Kompadich, I couldn't give you those stats. I don't recall us having one in that specific situation. Certainly, we've had fatalities in the construction field, but not specifically related to a traffic issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess it looks like that's it. Any more comments? Okay, all in favor? Let's just have that again. Okay, opposed? Okay, passed.
Under Agenda Item 8.6, Information Technology Infrastructure, a motion by Councilors Myers and Butland, whereas the recent capital priority plan had some capital projects for the Corporation of the City of Sault Ste. Marie's information technology or IT requirements, and whereas technology and technical infrastructure can often assist in delivering services effectively, and whereas the Corporation of the City of Sault Ste. Marie has to ensure that it is delivering services as effectively as it can. And whereas the Corporation of the City of Sault Ste. Marie has developed and is working on initiatives with its economic development partners, Sault Ste. Marie EDC and Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Center, to make the City of Sault Ste. Marie attractive to information and communications technology, ICT businesses, and the ICT economy. And whereas the Corporation of the City of Sault Ste. Marie should be considering how to make strategic investments in its IT infrastructure, to modernize and advance its infrastructure, to ensure effective service delivery, and to create an innovative climate within the corporation. Now therefore be it resolved that staff arrange for the provision of a service delivery review with a specific intention of developing a service delivery model focused on the modernization of the Corporation of the City of Sault Ste. Marie's IT infrastructure.
So, Council, this has come out of a number of discussions that I've had with city staff, senior city staff, and obviously I've had conversations with Frank about this, who does a very capable job of running our IT department. And the discussions were really focused on, like, how do we become a real progressive community and leader in IT? And what's our infrastructure look like in the city, and how do we jump that infrastructure forward? So it's something that senior staff supports. I think it's a big part of what we talked about earlier, goes hand-in-hand with becoming a smart city. But it's also important for us, for being a leader in the community, to be a leader in the community, especially as a trying advocate for this transition from the traditional economy to, like, the new economy. So I think it's just incumbent upon us to make sure we're using the best, we have the best IT structure available to us. And staff had suggested to me, if that was a goal, and we wanted them to undertake it, that we should frame the motion in this respect. So I worked with senior staff to frame this motion. And it would take them some time to take a look at this, because it's a bit of a deep dive, but it really involves how we interface with the community. I think it's a really positive and progressive thing to do, and I just really appreciate your support in directing staff to undertake this initiative, which will take them a while, probably take them the better part of next year to look at this. So it'll be something that we would be looking at in 2019, and not necessarily for the 2018 budget.
Council Butland?
Yep. Fully supportive, and as you pointed out, this is no doubt related to 8.1 and other considerations that are before us at this particular time, if we're moving from here to here, particularly information technology. There is an issue I think that we could help address, along with academic institutions. We have a critical shortage of IT-trained people, young people, staff. For instance, Createch said they need 17 people by the end of the year, and 30 by the end of next year, and so on. The people are not there. Those are not the only IT jobs that are not capable of being filled in Sault Ste. Marie. We are not the only city. This is right across Ontario. But is there some way we can be smart and try to address this? Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Under Agenda Item 11, I've got the consent motion for bylaws, and I'm saving and accepting bylaws 2017-192 and 27-193 that you have a conflict on. A motion by Councilors Nero and Shoemaker, resolved that all bylaws under Item 11 of the agenda, under date October 10, 2017, be approved. Save and accept bylaws 2017-192 and 2017-193.
All in favor? Carried. Council Fata, you're going to have to do the next motion, because it's the bylaws that I believe are maybe conflicted on. And then you can just finish it off from there.
Bylaw 2017-193 is a lane closing in Cameron subdivision. Motion by Councilors Nero and Shoemaker, resolved that bylaw 2017-193 being a bylaw to stop, up, close, and authorize the conveyance of a portion of Cameron Lane in the Cameron subdivision, Plan 310, be read the first and second time in open council this 10th day of October 2017.
All in favor? Passed.
Bylaw 2017-192 is a lane assumption part of Cameron Lane. A motion by Councilors Nero and Shoemaker, resolved that bylaw 2017-192 being a bylaw to assume for public use and establish as a public lane, that portion of Cameron Lane described as pin 315410279, Part 20, Lane Plan 310 St. Mary's, also known as Cameron Lane, south of Herrick Street, Cameron subdivision, be passed in open council this 10th day of October 2017.
All in favor? Passed.
A motion by Councilors Nero and Hoopinen, resolved that this council proceed into closed session to discuss a proposed disposition of property and a proposed acquisition of property. Further be it resolved that should the said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matter without the need for a further authorizing resolution. That's under Section 239-2C of the Municipal Act, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality.
All in favor? Passed.
And a motion by Councilors Nero and Hoopinen, that this council now adjourn.
All in favor? Passed.